Good evening. I'm sorry about getting my thoughts together here. I'll have a gavel. I called the meeting to order, the City of Clemson May night 2022, regular Planning Commission meeting when I come to order. This meeting is on Zoom, is that correct?
It'll be uploaded to YouTube.
It'll be uploaded to YouTube. It's not being shown on YouTube tonight. And it's also held in person in the University Building. Masks are no longer required, but are acceptable if desired. The Planning Commission is appointed by and serves in an advisory role to the City Council regarding development of our city. We are an independent group and are not employees of the city. So I'd like to introduce our Commissioners to you. This end, John Crowley, Brad White, Larry Allen, Brad Rice, and Jackie is on Zoom?
Yes, that's where she's not working at, but you, we tested earlier.
And I'm Elaine Richardson. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. And I will leave this meeting. Thank you. We have a call, so we can move forward. Members of administrative staff are present from the Planning and Coats Department. The IT Department, Rick, is here. Staff Kelly Winchester is our secretary. And we have Todd Stedman and Art Holgwood from the Planning and Coats Office. Will we have a way for the public comment?
Yeah, if there's anybody that has signed up. If they're a person or if they're on the webinar, I'll see them come into the webinar.
Okay, so we're kind of doing things on the other end. We're not taking calls during this, because everybody already has their time and be there. However, if anybody there that would like to speak or anybody from the public who would like to speak about items that are not on the agenda for tonight. Good evening.
Let me sign in.
Jackie.
Hi Jackie, thank you.
I'm Rick Ware, live at 100 Holiday West, Clemson. During Dockside, we talked a lot about disney. And I think the inventory was put in place. And we started bringing this back up, and it doesn't appear that we're making any progress on disney. So I'd like to know where we're at with this. I think 125 people per acre on a CP lot is way too much, especially when it's adjacent to other houses or other developments. The second thing is we talked about building heights and how those building heights are set. And I've said it to Lou in the face, but we allowed Dockside to cut down. If you go look at it, you should go look at it, it's cut way down to about 5 feet. And it's built up on that side. And one of the problems that they built it up, now they could get the trucks and the gates that they want to work from. So I was like, not our problem. You can't do it from the road. Because we did last week find out that there is something called a site management agreement. But, um, one of the things that I think Jacob and I last discussed was stories instead of height. I would be all in for that. There was a situation or a job that I did up in Clayton, North Carolina. Of course, it's an industrial facility, 95 acre site for the world's largest biotech facility. And that job in itself, what we had, we have a utility building that had 40 foot tall buildings. And we set it back 40 feet from the property line. Well, through the engineering phase, we realized we had to raise that building height to 45 feet. And the City of Clayton came back and said, then you got to move it back 5 feet. So I would support that we do stories. Whatever how high you go up, you got to go out. And that gives everybody the buffer that they need. Just go look at Dockside, and you'll realize that there's just not a lot of buffer there at all. So I think those two things would help us out a lot. For those, and then I'll say more other comments for the other side.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? Any questions? All right, um, let's see. The next agenda item is the adoption of the minutes from the April the 9th, 2022 regular meeting. And we have a question or a comment or questions?
I just, I noticed in item seven, when you're listing the individuals, you have Mr. White and Mr. White. Boy, Mr. White twice. I don't, I don't know who that's supposed to be.
And Carly's name is spelled wrong, too. It doesn't all right, right?
Correct.
Okay, so. Tell me, I'm not sure who else that would have been. What's got Mr. White in this place?
We can go back and review the tape.
Yeah.
We can review the tape.
Okay. Well, what we do, what we postpone this for next time so we can verify that we have everything correct. Before we leave it, is there anything else that she needs to look at? Or do we go and review it? We'll wait, we'll approve those at the next meeting when they're updated. Now we've got our action items. And the first one is, so A is a report on MJS 000017-2022, major subdivision Papa Grove. So let's start with staff support.
Okay, thank you. An application for a major subdivision was submitted by Mr. Baker Jones April the 18th, 2022. That's a place, 8007, a parcel near 1053 Berkeley Drive. Owned by a Unicorns Community LLC. Will be subdivided into seven residential lots and approximately 33,500 square feet of common open space. The proposal also includes the construction of 518 feet of new public street. The parcel, which is situated across the street from Ashley Dearing Park, is owned by a single-family residential business, no rezoning proposed. Only single-family dwellings currently located on the property. The sketch plan review tonight is the first review of a proposed development by the Planning Commission. And it's intended to allow the developer to present the concept of the project and to receive input and guidance in early stages. As such, many details remain to be addressed. Sketch plan submission has been reviewed by other city departments, and no impediments to meeting. All the standards have been identified. If it's approved, the next step will be the master plan.
Do we have comments from the developer, please? Is that the name of, the name of it's going to be Papa Grove?
Uh, Papa Grove.
Papa Grove, Papa Grove Street?
Yeah, I think I'm going to change the name to Papa Grove. So our goal is, I think we've got it in seven lots. We're showing one intention, we're basically trying to go, we don't want to map grade. We want to keep as many trees as we can. Want the layout to be intentional. Our goal is for us to live there. I think what's labeled number six is the one that my wife and I are planning on living on. We're moving up here from Atlanta. So they're going to live in the farmhouse that's out there right now until we start developing the neighborhood. We want these custom homes, we want kind of a minimum finish of like concrete, more exciting, minimum amount of masonry. We want to keep it, again, to feel like very intentional, keep as many trees. I don't want to map grade. I want it to be bigger lots. And keep the average size about 43,000 square feet. So, yeah, right now, yeah, that probably could change along the way, but. That's all I got for right now.
Um, so Commissioners, what kinds of questions or comments or whatever do you have? Can we start, this is probably done.
I'm just, I live not too far from there in a different neighborhood, but I've been trying to pinpoint there is a lot that has just been cleared. And, but you, is that it? Or because you had just mentioned you were, is that next door?
That is next door. I haven't followed that.
Okay, and that is not?
That's not part of it.
Okay, that would be this little cutout.
That it's a private property.
Okay. That was all, that was all, just trying to figure out where the.
Is that where the farmhouse is? One house is 1053.
The farmhouse is 1053, yes ma'am.
Are there houses on 1035 and 1039?
Uh, there was a house on 1035 and 1039, they specifically called them that house. I think that everybody was pretty excited that it was, um.
Yeah, it looks, it looks better now.
Honeycat called me about 30 minutes after Dustin unhooked the door and said, your permit's ready. So I think that they were excited to, uh, to get rid of the tenants that had been in there previously.
Did you have any more to comment?
I'm, I'm good. I was just trying to figure out how far up the road the driveway was going to be.
No, I think, none at this time, no.
Greg?
Nope, I'm good.
I think the only other thing I would throw out is that we have discussed with Ethan a couple times, possibly doing like an alternative type of stormwater system and with the goal of getting back the lot that's labeled detention currently. So, and Ethan said he was up, I haven't had a conversation with Nathan yet. Uh, stormwater manager.
Oh, Nathan.
Uh, Ethan.
Nathan, Nathan.
Ethan.
Ethan.
There's Ethan out there.
Okay, there's an Ethan out there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, got it. Okay, um, my only question is about this tree. Because there are some beautiful trees on that piece of property, amazing tree.
Yes, ma'am.
So are you going to maybe create for us a, like an inventory of what you plan to keep?
Yes, ma'am. And that's what we've already, we've already completed the tree survey. And they're finishing it up right now. And then we're going to lay it out, and I think there will be some adjustments to accommodate a couple of trees that are larger that we definitely want to keep.
Okay, good. I mean, I was, I've been reading about tree ordinances today anyhow. And there's, there's some in South Carolina that if it's greater than 24 inches, you have to get special permission to cut it down. So we can move to something like that sometime. But I'm excited to hear that you are, that you're willing to do that and to preserve those beautiful trees.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, that's what we want for it. We wanted to have a good deal and to not just go in and masquerade and take everything off that's on there.
And do you have an idea what the price point on the homes will be?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I would say 650.
I do have just one question. If, since you mentioned that you may be reclaiming that detention lot.
Yep.
Um, would you be seeking any kind of setback, variance or anything for that? I just noticed the flood plain comes way up in that lot. So if you did, you wouldn't need any kind of variance or anything to build on?
I don't, I don't, now I don't see reasons. I mean, that may change in the future, but I don't, I don't plan on getting any variances.
Okay.
Do we have anyone from the public who would like to speak to this project, ask questions or whatever?
Adam Jones, property at 1029 Berkeley. We're building a house up there. Everything sounds good. I, I joined two of these lots on the back, and we've just done everything we can to preserve the trees on our lot to build a nice, um, kind of. I'm just looking to try and make sure we get a vegetated buffer between us and the backside of the development coming in. If you guys are interested in us, that would not be a long shot.
Y'all willing to talk, have a lot to talk about?
I want a preliminary meeting to make sure everybody's aware. I'm trying to keep all the volume I can, but that lot doesn't have a whole lot on it. So whatever we can get, we'll do that.
Yeah, we can figure that out.
Yeah. Kill it. No, no, we're good.
Anybody else? You have comments to tell me, right?
At this point, the objective is to, to hear from the developers and we all to have a chance to answer questions. There's certainly nothing jumping out to us as a problem. And that the tree inventory would be a normal process. We're going to, that's a requirement for them to come back and do an inventory. Especially if they're getting credit for anything.
Yeah, actually, that's really the big addition to what they pretty much already got, collected for the information. That's the big one for the master plan, when they come back. They have to have the inventory. And then we don't have to have the landscape plan and protection plan until the final step, but the inventory is required for master plan.
So this is an action item that we both moved forward?
We got a good, clear.
So you will have a motion to move this forward?
Don't move.
Larry Allen?
I'll take it.
And Brad Tekken? All in favor, put your hand. And Jackie?
I have a question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Um.
Go ahead.
I know that area floods pretty bad. Every time I drive down there, drive through there, drive around there on the Berkeley Road, on between a trail, it floods pretty good. And so you don't have any setbacks for lot two, three, and four? Because that's where it usually floods up pretty bad, even onto that grassy area where that one house is.
Berkeley House, also. So the outside, even next to the creek, even if we build basements there, the basement line would be roughly 12 to 16 feet above floodplain. There's a lot of elevation. You've got that floodplain, it goes up pretty drastically. So if those houses flood, City of Clemson floods, kind of thing. So we don't have much concern.
So that was your question, Jackie, or do you have questions?
Yeah, then also with the new construction, because there were some houses that were put on before you get to that corner, before you get to your property. And then you've got the park across the street. That road, that road has been flooding due to the new construction. Has any kind of accommodations been put in there to prevent it from coming onto the road and make sure it goes into the creek?
I'm not sure what you can.
My question is that with the construction going on, the houses that were built before your property had construction going on. And I noticed that the road started flooding where they weren't flooding before. And it got really bad. Last year was the worst. And so I'm assuming that with more construction and less trees will come more runoff from your property. Has anything, is anything being done to mitigate that runoff from your property, especially during construction?
I know we're working with Ethan, Ethan to do the stormwater planning, if that answers your question.
I'm Jamie Turner with Bridgewater. Yeah, as far as, I mean, we've not gotten to that point yet, but you know, when it comes to the preliminary plant phase, we will, right, even stormwater, like, we'll ensure that, you know, we can control the water. And then Ethan and Nathan will make sure we can control that water. So, I mean, that will be, you know, preliminary plant phase, when all that will be addressed.
Jackie, are you talking about during construction or after it's finished?
Both.
With the flooding?
Both, both, because it was.
I mean, it'll be designed where we will not put any, I mean, that's a DOT road. The DOT won't allow us to increase any water on their road. And they're, they're pretty strict, too. So, and between the DOT and the construction, it will be designed that there will be no water flowing through the road.
I just brought it up as a point of concern because if that's a DOT road, and I'm sure the previous builders probably said the same thing, but yet still we have the worst flooding we've had on that road for a while. So I just thought if I bring it up as a point of, a point.
All right, are there any other questions or comments from the public, from the Commissioners? So are anybody prepared to make a motion?
We already did, we were just waiting on her vote.
Oh, yeah, we all did, though, didn't we? Jackie, we're waiting on your vote, I'm sorry, thank you.
Uh, is there any way that I can vote with the caveat that the flood, you know, making sure that the floodwaters or flooding would be addressed and it not be an issue?
That will be presented as part of the later review. Because that's not required at this level. This is still conceptual, it's not.
Okay, I'm getting, I'm getting ahead of myself. Okay, I approve.
As you observed, pointed out, that the flooding in that area is already a problem prior to any development of these proposed developments. And that the lot in the city is in the process of acquiring one of the quarters in Berkeley that one thing they're looking at is possibly putting another culvert in there, upsizing the culvers, because part of the problem is the water can't get underneath Berkeley and it's going over. And so that problem's been building for some time. And I think it's linked itself way upstream as much as anything. So there, as the engineer here said, that whatever they do on this site will be, will have to be the code and have to be in our standards. Problem is we have stuff that's happened upstream prior to our standards being in place that have slowly accumulated. And so I just bring that up, Jackie, because you said you want to make sure that the flooding is addressed. I don't know that it will be the responsibility of this project to fix the flooding problem, because I don't think they're the cause of the flooding problem.
No, just not add to it. That's my concern.
So we'll move on to the next one now. And that is item 4B. Action item 4B is the report on MFSV 000017-38-2021, major subdivision Kingswood Cottage. In fact, I ran a line, and I'm over here. So first, staff support.
An apple tree for the subdivision. 14, 21, on the post, 14, 22, situated near 1063 Clemson Street, subdivision 37 lot. The proposal also includes the construction of 1,326 feet of new road, which would be three streets. The property is currently configured as a portion of a parcel situated on both the east and west sides of Clemson Street in the city of Clemson. But only the portion of parcel located on the west side of the street is proposed as part of the future project. The sketch plan review is held on January the 10th. And during the session, the developer and members of the Planning Commission discussed the possibility of creating a potential second access to link the development to College Avenue. And although that's not required by city standards, the developer agreed to explore the matter and attempt to seek the necessary agreements. After discussions with the property owner did not result in any agreement, the developers moved ahead under the original concept. The master plan review is the second step in the major subdivision review process and is intended to allow the developer to raise proposals and receive input from the Planning Commission prior to developing final engineering and utility plans for construction. And if the master plan is approved, the developer may move ahead with seeking preliminary class pool, which will be the final step before seeking permits to actually construct the project. And I've had one, this is a letter from a citizen. He called months ago. And he said, Lynn, he would like to commission you to copy of this. And it's not about the development, it's about a right of way with Duke Energy. And he understands that the city does not control Duke Energy, what they're going to do. And I don't know if Chuck has been aware of, had any contact with. He lives in Texas. And it goes back to the 1930s. It's a pile, by the way. It goes across the corner or across his lot, it's the corner of land next to it. Anyway, he said he knows that the Planning Commission has gotten a say-so in this matter, but he just wanted us to share this letter. And it's just been, he said the next time he took it under consideration, and this is the next time, because it's been on hold for a while. So I'll just pass, pass through down, and we have.
Will you get one to Jackie?
Yes, we will get one to Jackie. And I just wanted, because I promised the gentleman that I would give it to you with enterance in the minute that it's distributed, and so it's matter of. And, but again, it's nothing to do with the development itself. So it's not, he was just concerned about the right of way. So, and he, at that time, he's when, trying to get with Duke. And they wouldn't, he hadn't been able to talk to a person at the time. So that would be the source of it. And that's all I've got.
Right, um.
What's he, I have, obviously I haven't read this. What, it looks like he, he comes directly out to Clemson Street. So what's his concern with, with whatever right of way he's referring to?
He, he does not want Duke to run across his land.
I'm sorry?
He does not want Duke to, Duke to.
Oh, okay, okay.
As this is being, as this is being built.
I got you.
Yes, it was the 1930s. It was something, he inherited the land, he and his brother. Uh, I think of course his parents somehow had it. And he's not been here in many years.
Okay, I got you now. Thank you.
All right, I did copy that one.
You certainly can.
I'm Chuck Wright, consulting for legal. And appreciate the opportunity to be here. Like Art was saying, you know, the last meeting, we had to look at the possibility of other access points. Phil alone, who's a realtor, has met with the seller. This is Mr. Bagwell. He also talked to Emily Wood. Do you have, uh, yes, maybe show me, overall, or? Okay, um.
Would this one be more helpful?
Yes.
Could we have this one up?
Still a long way out from 133.
I don't know, can you?
Oh, the parcel line?
Can we put that parcel thing up with, if that shows?
If that'll be the report.
Yeah, I don't know if you got them. Well, while he's looking for that, I'll just give you a little bit of the background. So, and we talked to Mr. Bagwell, and then the Emily of Hope owns a piece that goes down to 133, also, I'm sorry, Emily Wood. Charlotte Pope also owns like a 10-foot strip, sort of has a flag lot that goes down to 133. Those are all adjacent to Mrs. Bagwell's property that we're not buying. Okay, so we talked to them about, you know.
So where the yellow, where the yellow square is, when it returns?
Yeah, yeah, the yellow square, that, that's Emily Wood's property. And then right above that is Charlotte Pope's property, okay? We talked to both of them. Yeah, the yellow square is Emily Wood. And then right to this side of it is, so, Pope's property. She owned a 10-foot strip adjacent to the yellow parcel and Miss Bagwell's property, sort of a flag went down there. We talked to both of them about, you know, either buying property or getting needs, we have to buy property to attack the public road. You know, listen to us very receptive. But we'd also have to get additional property from Mrs. Bagwell to make it work as far as alignment, you know, coming in at a 90-degree angle with DOT. And she wasn't going to sell it. us anything, give us any sort of easement. So it sort of died, because we've got a 50-foot right-of-way there, you know, Charlotte Pope only has 10 feet, you know, and then Emily Wood, we have to give some, and Mrs. Bagwell had to give some, anyways, we couldn't work it out with them as far as trying to get access down to 133. I mean, we talked to all three property owners, and, you know, we just weren't able, we said we're never able to work something out, try to get access down there, so that's why we had to stay with the original plans, as we submitted when we had the sketch plan. Just want to keep a little bit of background, you know, just off the property owners, get the property owners, yes, do, try to work something out, just weren't able to work something out as far as, you know, to get the necessary right-of-way width to create a road to come down to the, and now we've got the answers to questions that y'all might have.
Commissioners have questions?
Uh, no, nothing, I'm good, thank you.
I would like to ask one question, because I know Miss Bagwell owns those two pieces that are right along 133. There's an old road bed that goes up between those two, so there's already sort of a road there.
Were, you talking about next to the den's office?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, the water line that comes down from there.
But there's an old road bed that goes up to there, too.
Yeah, right, right, but, but that, again, isn't as wide enough, and she doesn't want to sell any of the property to us, okay? Yeah, because that's where the six inch water line comes down to 133, because that actually comes through our property, well, we were three little kitted water lines that come through our property and tie back into that, but yeah, on, sort of south side of that den's office, that's, that old road bed sort of down, well, that's where the water line comes down, 133.
That's too bad it won't work, because I'm worried about Puntson Street, because if this other development that's been pulled off the thing tonight, I think, but that's going to put 500 more cars there. That's not going to be good for your project either.
Like I said, we, you know, we talked to all property owners, you know, couldn't work anything out as far as getting necessary right-of-way to bring a road down to 133.
Jackie, do you have any questions or comments?
Not at this time.
What's next, Tom?
Well, there are two observations and comments I'd like to make, and I've spoken to Chuck and Philip about one of them, and they did try hard to get that vehicular connection and with the, with the, with the Bagwell's, uh, little, to cooperate in that case, and so, but I did ask them about talking to the hulks in the woods about getting that strip for a continuation of a, the Grand Crescent Trail, or a, kind of isolation bike connection between all this getting ready to happen on Clemson Street and on Central, because we're requiring Kennedy Project to connect on Central to Clemson Street, if we can get from Clemson Street to 133, then, and so, I'd love to continue to explore that, that'll take cooperation with the four of all authorities, it's a different matter of land required, I'm not familiar with the topo, and it's also a little bit different ask of the, of Emily and Charlotte, because of the, kind of the mutually beneficial nature of that. But anyway, that's something I'd like to bring up, and the other thing is that, and I do think Chuck and Philip, that we had all the phone calls trying to figure out who to talk to and how to do this work, completely, I do think they tried everything they could do. Here, when this culvert stack comes in, I believe it's, if there was, and they all have, I believe, the bridge is, I already said the common area, if there was any way, and I know this is late in the game, to, to somehow get this, in the virtuality, that whoever purchases Miss Bagwell's property, that there's a way to make a connection through where we got some way to, that to contribute, if, if it's not an option today, laying down the road. And again, I don't know what's the main issues might be in perpetuity of that idea, and Chuck and Philip may have already spoken to Miss Bagwell on that, which that's not even an option, in which case, there'd be no point of asking the developer to do it, but is this culvert stack that's closest to the word layout plan on this sheet, and if where it holds out, if, if that common area could somehow be expanded a little bit to have adequate enough right-of-way to connect, if any, virtual? Those are the concerns I have, otherwise, I think we're.
Kind of, I think one thing along that line right there is, you know, her property is done differently.
Yeah.
Our is zoned multifamily, we're doing single family, ours could be 20 units per acre, we're just doing the single family.
Hers, hers is zoned commercial, I don't know exactly zoning, but.
CP1, yeah.
Yeah, where if, you know, if that gets developed, odds are we should just sell parcels off.
That'd be my guess, too.
So how we put the road through there, I don't know.
We, we have an application that's been submitted, it's being processed, it's a simple lot subdivision, four parcels. Now, that's including one, each of the existing buildings, so there'll be two new parcels.
But that's one of my, my concerns as far as, you know.
So it sounds like that this is my idea wouldn't work, just based on the way Miss Bagwell was standing with the division that's on, oh, well, good.
I stand the same, it's just there's a different zoning, and how that would be developed, I don't know if the road thing would work.
That's a shame. Chuck?
Yeah. Philip here, he, like I said, he, he's, yeah.
He's in disguise.
Yeah, yeah. So sorry I look like this. Philip Maloney, 409 Red Maple Way, we've been working this, and a little, a little way, as Chuck mentioned multiple times, we really tried, and so, but what you brought up about the bike, Emily is in favor of that, Jill Thompson's in favor of that, I think that's something that can be done.
Yeah, so that's the one, as Chuck pointed out, just getting by in the CP1 and getting a little bit through there, we've, we've tried to work both sides, see her points, that other side, we're slowing her down a lot, we're paying for it, we, so, it just, she didn't want to split it apart, okay, so that's, but I do think the bike trail could work.
So she's wanting to keep those two licenses, except for one, that we just on that, the two, the only one that's now.
Yeah.
All right, um, now, what the commissioner has been doing? No, nobody got any? Y'all? I do, and it's about trees. Um, I know, I know that's got, that property, some parts of that property have some beautiful trees on it, too. There's an inventory on here, like, that, I'm, I have old eyes, and they, I've even had color, so I do, and I still can't read it very well.
Those are all the trees, I think, over what, eight, nine, or, on the whole site, I think, I think they're two, as far as, okay, so that's now, some of them is gone, you know, where, because they're quality and building plates, and that's where, but there's a lot, we have, I think, what, three points, we got some in the common area, where we've got the common areas, you know, all the, those trees are going to stay.
Okay, so, I'll see that, there's a, I think that says 42-inch red oak, is that tree coming down? Is it the third one on? That's the first one I saw, that was good.
Twenty eights.
That's just one that jumped out, because it took 48 inches.
Four twenty seven, it's right behind, it's right behind you, this isn't happening.
It's on the lot line of two and three, if you look at the, the layout.
We don't have anything that big.
You look, yeah, yeah, between lines two and three, there's, there's, four twenty eights, yeah.
Oh, it's in the way of a.
Right, right there, four twenty eights right there, okay, and with grade in this site, I can, I'm going to be honest with you, I can guarantee it's going to be gone.
So are, do you have any, anything like that, that would be protected?
I'd have to, you know, and when we do the next stage, what, this all trees are protected, you know, the, you know, there's going to be a lot of trees, you know, that are going to be protected, I, I can't tell you right now, the size, and I haven't felt sitting down and taking a look at it, but, you know, everything on here is at least, you know, eight inches or bigger, you know, to tell you which ones, I'd have to sit down and take a look, but, there's going to be a good amount of protection, because we got, you know, four inches of common area, there's a lot of trees in there, I guess, but, you know, again, the trees are also an asset, because, you know, it helps, it fails, and everything else, if you manage, if you, if then, if you find the lot layout, you're doing nothing to do with the trees, and you start having lots that's small, start to graze, you know, try to save the trees, two years later, you're taking it down to the guy, you know, you just can't work around it, or, you know, you start building houses, and you have to start to tap it around it, so, you know, two years later, the tree's dead, and not even taking it down, so, that's why we're trying to take the one in the common area, protect those, and just keep, stop the tapping, stop the grazing.
So I, just to follow up on that, as you mentioned, what are you guys planning for the common area? Is it just, like, leave it as plain as it can be, or underbrushing or anything, or?
Just leave it as plain as it is.
Plain, okay.
What do you have?
Like, like I said, it's all pretty, pretty heavily rooted.
Yeah, I didn't know if you were going to, like, underbrush it to make it pseudo-use?
Sometimes they walk the trail through some of those areas, they just like take some small underbrush out, but that would take down anything, I mean.
And where is, is this the common area along here that you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, around there, all the way around the hill, it's, it's common area.
But you will tell us next time?
Yes, ma'am, next time, when, the next stage, if we unify that, that's when we've got to have the tree plan, because we've got to show a percentage of coverage, because we've got to have, you know, with your landscape architects, we've got to have, I mean, 25% coverage in, in 10 years, or whatever, some, a tree that's planted plus trees to save. So any trees that we save are in our benefit, because they're already big trees, so they help in that, in that, reading your landscape ordinance as far as the percent coverage that we have, so, you know, if it, if it hurts us to take trees down, we'll have to take down, because now we got to put, put back more to get to that percentage back up.
Um, and what's the price point on the houses?
Uh, I would say probably.
I'd say, similar to those cats, is on average, they're, mid to mid range of 400 to 450.
No, when you first talked to us about that, they were going to be less than 300.
Yeah, I know. People keep adding to them, you know, they want, they want every option, it seems like anymore, where, uh, prices keep going up on them.
So they'll be quarter, 500,000, something like that?
That's over there, that's, because we pushing that, it's on 12.
Jackie, do you have any questions or comments?
Not at this time. Actually, I do.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm looking for the, um, area, give me a second, I want to make sure I'm looking at the right, PD, um, is this the one that's going to have a park in there? Am I reading this wrong?
No.
Okay, then I don't have a question, I'm good.
All right, do we, anybody from the public want to speak? No, no. Any prepared to make a motion, commissioners?
I'd like to make a motion to advance, uh, master plan that's presented before us.
Okay. Those in favor?
I agree.
Before to the next part, then. The Mark R. T.D. has been, has been correct.
I never, I tried to contact, uh, I, uh, we didn't, I guess, they must have gotten permission, you know.
They're not here.
But, uh, this is probably deserved, or we all, we all were in favor of taking the conversation. And I said, that, uh, I, I think we, two things would be helpful, like, one is going to set a workshop date, where we can sit down and, well, if we need to go through the different tasks, and any other issues, we'll all discuss, and that'd be really important. And then the other thing is that, uh, to get feedback from the commission, if y'all are generally in favor of, there we are, that you've got, you know, made requests, they responded, and everything is built off the site plan, and so, we all can discuss the site plan, the provisions, identity, the layout, um, because if y'all have recommended changes to that, it will change everything else they committed. So, the conversation, undoubtedly appropriate, to, because they have submitted that, and we're hoping to get your feedback, and to, to, in favor of the site plan, if it's needed.
So, commissioner, question, um, I mean, I guess we don't really need to do any of that, I do want to ask one question about this, um, there's a statement here, it says there will be no requirement for conserved tree canopy on this street, on this building, why not?
I don't know, it, it's one of the things, I think, that we correct, I'll say this, though, we, uh, did have just a few minutes, because I really have had less than, probably five minutes to look at this today, that when you refer to the ordinance, the landscape standards they had, where they have interior on the roadway, they have trees every 50 feet, and the whole parking area, which is, is a lot of parking, all the, um, the trees, all, no part of the parking area is more than 40 feet away from the baked trunk of a, of a canopy tree. We usually use those as a standard, it's going to have a good 50 to 40% canopy coverage, but I'm going to have, I'm going to recommend we have a fill of that, which is just simply a matter of drawing the circles for where all those trees are going to be, and then doing math as to what the coverage is. But I thought, I thought that was strange, too, that it jumped out, because it was, and also, I'm confused a little bit, I'd like to, I mentioned it in an earlier iteration to them, that I thought it would be helpful for them to define open space, common open space, they haven't done that in the year that I saw, and, and the math of that didn't quite add up, because they had 40% minimum, area of 60% maximum, there, there was something in there, the math wasn't quite well-ordered to be, and I thought it was something we should bring to their attention. But, in general, the site plan, you know, the last time they all had taken over that, and they had run and sorted down in with the, so the farm's not, we all been given feedback on the commercial parcels, and they were working on those changes, and we staff continued to work, to see if there was a way to work out the park, and came up with a solution that you have for you. So now what you have is some park land, with the future of which is very uncertain, so what, if, how it would be utilized, that part has not been decided, but the city's well-accepted as, and then the small rural area, and then the rest of it is pretty straightforward housing. And the density is what it is, I think I, I can't remember, did we share the, we, we sent out the annexation report, I think, yeah, and so the numbers will change a little bit, the annexation report I did, I think is slightly, the, the density is a little bit less than before, but it's not going to change the, the cost benefit ratio that much, $20,000, because I think that the last time they changed it, removing like three or four houses, went from like 280,000 to 280,000. went from like two hundred and eighty thousand to two hundred and sixty-five thousand a year, annual net, to the street. But anyway, I, I agree with you, Elaine, that there were some items in here that I think would be helpful to, we need to clarify, and what I was first, to set a date, is for y'all to take a look at it, and, uh, we'll, we'll be invited from Kennedy to, to attend the workshop. Um, but to, uh, anything that's, any questions like that, so we, we want answers for this kind of thing. But tonight, if you could just take a look at the site plan and say, this is where, this is what all that's for, uh, actually, the workup to this whole bathroom, uh, because when it, uh, was a park plan, remember, we didn't think that was gonna happen last time.
Is there something different in the revised thing they sent? See, I, I'm.
Yeah, the only, if the, all the revised one, Elaine, what they did was, uh, they had dropped the parking lot into the park areas, kind of in the middle area. And, uh, when we were talking to Parks and Rec, that they felt like maybe it was more parking than was necessary for the site. So, they shrunk the mountain park down and also moved it over closer to where the, uh, commercial area will be, the little adult friendly bodega, market, cafe, whatever. Because that will make sense, because that's where there will be seven hour water and that kind of stuff. So, they just moved it to where we have more uninterrupted open space and a little bit, uh, smaller parking footprint, ways of anticipating maybe. That was the, that was really the change in the vision, I believe.
Todd, I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around all this. And I don't re, I don't recall the specificity when we developed the, uh, change in the, the plan development where we would allow, uh, park and open space. So, is it, did we, I thought we put something in there about, um, uh, developing amenities and et cetera? So, it, it looks like this is sort of halfway there.
Correct, and, and you're absolutely correct, Larry. And that, um, in this case, if they didn't have the commercial component, all of that would come into play. They got a commercial component that kind of satisfies the state requirement. And that gives us a little bit of leeway, if the commission feels like it's a benefit to the city, to accept this proposal for this couple of acres of land, knowing that until the park's left, if the city goes through a, a master plan, they're not quite sure what they're gonna do. And so, that's, that's the only hang up right now, because normally, uh, if, if Parks and Rec were ready to say, okay, we want this to be this kind of a park, we probably would have Mr. Kennedy build that park and do it now. They're just not prepared to say that, because they, they feel like they're getting the cart before the horse. And so, in this case, legally, the commercial component is there, satisfies the state requirement, and if we add this potential park, it just makes it even stronger.
And that, that brings me to the, the other half of my question, that, and I appreciate that explanation. On the commercial areas, are, are they, and I know we've had this debate somewhat with some of the developments that are already out there. So, they merely have to provide the, um, broad, basic infrastructure for the commercial development. Building it out is a responsibility of the commercial operator, right?
That is correct. It, our, our ordinance does not specify, it says the plan has to include a mix. Um, and that, uh, we, to my knowledge, have never, like the Patrick Square said, you've got to have this kind of commercial in here. They had, you know, they, they, they've been waiting until the office office come by and says, we wanna put a pediatric center here, and they say, great, that's gonna allow use. They sell them the land, we build the pediatric center. Then one situation here, uh, he's narrowing, narrowing the scope as to what his uses are gonna be, to where it's gonna be like a cafe or a bodega, you know, convenience store kind of thing. Um, I think those are the only uses he's got, just retail and food and beverage. Um, and my understanding is that, that Todd was planning to build, build, and then, you know, and that's where he would stop, because he doesn't run, he's not a restaurateur or a.
So, it won't be up, up here, it'll just be a shell?
And that, that's my understanding, and that is not, uh, I haven't seen it in here, and that's not spelled out yet. Um, but that, that might be something that we can, we, we can discuss with him to say, we'd like you to go ahead and build out some kind of shell. Now, the risk of that is, we're all taking a guess as to what that shell should look like, and we're kind of making a request of a developer to, I don't know. I think it's a, it's a valid discussion. I, I have mixed feelings on a personal level as to whether or not, how we would require that of a person if we can't give him some really good guidance as to what he should build. We hate to say, build a box, and then they come out and say, oh, if you make a shell shape and then perfect, then you're gonna build it, and, and you make a.
Kid, just a thought on that, if we wanted to leave it open or whatever, and he seems, he seems like he really, the commercial, he's only really doing it to get his requirement for a PD, he doesn't seem. Would there be a way to word up a contract or something like that, that if he doesn't build a shell? Because I noticed, one, one other thing is, I would also recommend moving the parking lot so that it, so that the park parking lot doesn't get co-opted into the commercial. Because he said some of that open space may be for bands or this, that, or the other, and if people are parking there, then nobody can park to use the park. But, since it does butt up, if we don't force him to build out or anything there, say, okay, if you don't have a tenant by X, Y, Z date, we will, you will just let the city annex this into part of this other part that you have already dedicated it, and that'll fulfill the requirement.
That would be a possibility, it would, it would have to come back through the process. It would be what was called a major amendment to the PD, because it would then have to follow, Larry, under the, uh, under the terms that you described, because there would be no commercial, it'd be all park. And, uh, we have to, one, make sure that it could be all those requirements. And, uh, uh, but that's, um, that's, these are the kind of things I think we would have, could have a discussion with, with, uh, with Todd Kennedy about.
Because I think as far as the layout goes on this plat, like, that leads itself well, because we don't know that anybody's necessarily gonna wanna put something out there. I know everybody thinks a bodega or little community shop would be great for traffic, but he's obviously doesn't wanna run it, and I don't wanna run it, and I don't know that anybody here wants to run it. So, that's the problem, is they gotta find somebody that's gonna come in and operate it. We don't wanna get stuck with, here, here's this unused piece of property that's just gonna sit and sit and sit because nobody wants to put it out there.
Um, do you see an issue with what Mr. Kennedy, that if we, there's a trigger point, the timeline, that, uh, um...
I think if you write it right, I don't think there would be a problem. Yeah, so, I mean, you, you're definitely right, because that would be, I mean, that's a significant change, and it's a major amendment thing.
But if we planned it, John, and the way you're talking about where it can work, it will work.
Yeah.
And then we can give it time to play out.
Because I think, I don't think he would mind even setting aside the funds to meet the requirement, because I know it's gotta have, it's gotta be an improved facility, so he can say, okay, it's gonna cost me X to build the building that I was gonna build, and I'll just bond that money or, or bank it wherever, and if I don't have to spend that on a commercial building by X date, I'll put in bathrooms or a walking track or, or whatever it needs to be to meet our definition of improved facility.
Yeah, that, again, I think these are, those are legitimate options and conversations for, for, uh, Mr. Kennedy. And, you know, I think we've all heard the same, same thing, that he doesn't wanna run it. I don't know where he's at on that, he may have, you know, found a lead, somebody who may express some interest in doing it. Uh, and it may also be a situation to where, uh, depending what happens with Kingswood, you know, Mr. Maloney's project, uh, there's another project on the other side of Central Road, um, that's gonna be coming before y'all, not too far down the line, so the fifty homes, fifty houses. And, and then we have this Babel, all her land up there. It might be a matter of, as that gets more developed, the demand for that, the bodega or market.
Yeah, well, that's what I figured, like, if we could leave it commercial instead of, and I don't mean like, oh, six months or a year, but like, okay, at four years, if it's still sitting empty, and you don't have a contract that says we're gonna start building by X date or something like that, just so it doesn't sit like a raised crawl space, if you will, and.
I think that's a smart idea, and, and I think it's a way that, what I, what I could envision would be this, that it would come back before the planning commission, y'all would make a recommendation to council that, hey, based on the outlook, this is what we think we ought to do with this. And, because there could be a lot of variables in there, and it might be, let's give it another year, just, you know, it's not ready yet, but this is big one, you know, building, it's, um, it's probably gonna raise it more, I just. I think it's a great idea, and we could write language in there to create that option.
We're talking about doing that for mixed use buildings, because we have so much retail space, commercial space, vacant, and the mixed use projects that we have, a, a lot. Um, and I thought, I don't know why I thought a PD would be different, that it would be his responsibility to recruit a business to go in there, too.
Well, it's, it's his responsibility, and, and you would typically think be their, you know, their motivation. And, but, to the degree that, that he's motivated, um, that's the critical part. And that, uh, as, uh, I think John mentioned, that there was a, uh, he, he put the commercial in there because he knows it's required, not because this is his daily week. And, which is, you know, fair and honest indictment on him or his business. Um, so, this is where I think the conversation we're having right now is so important, it can be protective to the city, because we can address this, and that, uh, I, I mean, I think we could say, let's build it out. Uh, you can make that requirement, you'd probably go along with it, but I do think that's a little bit risky, because we don't really know what to build out. And I like your idea better, John, and I think that it has potential to allow it to play out and, uh, and, and somehow give, uh, Mr. Kennedy some, recognize for him to, to, to just, we all have an expectation this is gonna be followed up on, and that it has to be by a certain amount of time or else it's not really qualifying as a PD.
And one of, not necessarily with the plat, but before I forget, one other thing to mention for the workshop is I did wanna see, I haven't seen it in here yet, but I did wanna see if we could put some language in for, um, occupancy restrictions. I know we talked before that, oh, it's gonna be the size and the parking that's gonna dictate that, but I've seen kids without cars go two to a bedroom or whatever, so if things get tight around here, I'd hate to see one of those townhouses go to four students that are splitting two cars and have four in there where there should be a family or something.
That was one of the requests, uh, from when I, I got the first draft of this, and I went through and started putting a bunch of things in there, and I said we need to identify our occupancy. It may be in here, I have, I had a chance to really go through it, but that's a good one.
Is it one for one parking?
I don't know, I don't have the idea.
I think, I think that's what he said last time, with maybe a certain percentage of extras.
And there was another term, I mean, Craig in here that concerns me, and says, we've all been really big on, on, um, workforce housing, and Craig says the proposal calls for, um, when you get, the proposal calls for up to forty-four.
Right, and I noticed that.
Forty-four.
Right, I noticed that today.
So, does that make anything to that, you know?
It's a good question, and I, I, again, I would, I would, I think that's why I'm talking about the site plan. The site plan shows forty-four, and if you say, we're, we're giving you support for this site plan, and your language needs to reflect that site plan.
Yeah.
And, and so, it should say forty-four.
Instead of up to forty-four.
Yeah, I, I noticed that.
That's really ambiguous.
And just like, yeah, that old cluster, y'all might not have gotten this, that, that, or shit. Beneath the, on the side of cluster, Carl Charleston Avenue, he's got, I think, um, forty-four, or forty-one, for the one bedroom, no, twenty, twenty-six, uh, I, I, twenty-four. Twenty-four. Twenty-four, there is this four bedrooms, but what they are, they're, um, they're four one-bedroom apartments in one building. And so, there's four bedrooms, there's four separate units.
It's like a quad flex.
Correct, quad flex, but they're all one-bedroom apartments.
And is that occupancy one or two?
Make one.
Would that occupancy be one or two?
We have decided, my assumption with occupancy is gonna be one per bedroom for these.
Right.
But I, to that.
Other than whether workforce housing, if it's a family.
And that would probably be an occupancy of two. That would lend itself, which is the same as all of our neighborhoods. And so, that would lend itself to be more family rented versus student rented, because they couldn't bring it up to, um, you know, for four individual students living there unless they were related to one another. Uh, so, I think that that would be addressed, from my assumption, and I might, I may be wrong, this is why we need to have that workshop, uh, whether it was gonna be one per, uh, occupancy was gonna be reflected as same as the bedrooms.
Now, what he had, he had mentioned there being, uh, younger, engaged, or graduate couples that maybe not be married yet, that stay in these quads that are popular in Atlanta. So, I don't know if we wanna do an allowance or something like, like, in these quads, you can have two for, you, two people per unit, or?
Well, no.
Yeah, be two unrelated, it's like, if they're engaged or not married yet, but, hey, we're in grad school, we're gonna get married when we get out, because he says, the way he put it was, they're so small that if you weren't intimately close with somebody, two people wouldn't wanna live there.
That was my next question, is, are, are you able to, does it have to be the occupancy as a blanket for the entire development, or can you do it for each building section?
You can do it for any way you want to, Greg, and if that, the, I'd suggested that they, uh, take the site, and I think they did it on one of the drawings, create five different areas, the townhouse area, the one-bedroom units we were talking about, the commercial, park space, and then everything else, which is the traditional student housing stuff. And, uh, and then for each one of those, we can talk about the density, the occupancy, the uses, and all that kind of stuff. And so, the answer is yes, we can have the townroom section to be one occupancy level, the one- bedrooms be another one, and then the student housing ones be another one.
Yeah, that's really what he's, I mean, the way he's laid that out, that could be done very efficiently.
Yes, he's got, uh, I think he's got the units versus beds on, but just mentioning that, uh, townhouse thing, that's the only one he actually lists a range of beds for as well. Yeah, this area three, he says, oh, we're gonna build forty-four units, that's anywhere from eighty-eight to a hundred and thirty-two. So, I guess he's gonna build two or threes, depending on what it calls for?
I, I had not seen that language in there, John, and that, because when I saw, saw, excuse me, I saw. He was very specific that, as to how many bedrooms, and there was no, there was, there was no range. It was a very specific number. So, that's news to me, I haven't had a chance to look at it, we'll need to pin that. Uh, I will say that, that for example, Patrick Square, Patrick Milliken, both of those PDs, they have a range. They have a target number to exceed, um, but it wasn't an absolute number. Um, and so, we might do something like that here, where you see final, I would have the, I would have the townhomes, because that's, that's a, 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 a discussion. And, and maybe even for the, for the quads, but for the rest of them, give them flexibility based upon what, when he starts getting in there, grading and moving things around, it might be that he either can squeeze in one more or have to do this one, and certainly if he needs to knock one or two out, we wouldn't wanna force him to do that.
Yeah. No, as far as tho, as far as overall units, yeah, that's, that's what I mean, is he's got the units in this updated one, it's a very specific number of units, it's just like, well, for twenty of these forty-four, I may do three bedrooms, or I may do two bedrooms. And so, that's, and that's why I think the occupancy thing would come in, because it'd be a lot easier for three students to split a three-bedroom, but at the same time, you know, I know people that are married that have two kids, that would love a three-bedroom place to live, you know, versus a two-bedroom, so.
Another thing I think we need to mention tonight is the traffic study, and you wanna talk about that, right?
Yeah, uh, what's the, uh, plans for the road improvements, do we, do you, I feel like a, an idea or any discussion?
Of the, the plan for road improvements?
Yeah.
Uh, he's gonna bring it up to, uh, city standards, uh, and. He's gonna bring it up to city standards and including a ten-foot multimodal halfway along there with the road profile. I don't know exactly, you know, other than he's agreed to build it to city standards.
That's Lawrence Road.
That's Lawrence Road. There's a...
Is that curb and gutter too, or what's?
Instead, I don't know the profile of the use, but generally speaking, the answer is yes. I think all of our roads are curb and gutter. We have any, we don't build any new streets that are curb and gutter. The, the request is to go ahead and develop, bring the road up standard from Old Central to Clemson Street. And initially in here, the language was for the multimodal just to be in front of his portion of Lawrence Road, which is roughly maybe sixty, sixty percent of that stretch. Nathan and I were talking about it and we think we might be going to go ahead and build that whole thing out if we can, that ten-foot whole road. Otherwise, we're worried about how, when it's gonna get built out. So that's something we can talk about in the workshop.
I just see a lot of, a lot of daily trips coming in out of this thing and Clemson Street and with no access to one thirty-three. I'm just really concerned about the impacts, what our current impacts are, and then how much more is it gonna add to it, just off this one development alone. You know, not just Chuck has, but...
With this, they did plan a traffic study, but what bothered me is that I read about was it won't impact this project at all.
Well, what Jason said, is when we had the workshop, I hope to, I won't invite him in, so I don't, I don't want him to miss speech, I mean, it'll be weird, a little bad information or anything like that. But the, in general, his, his view on this is that looking at the current conditions, that the addition of these units in raw strokes that we're talking about, you know, I told him this is roughly the number of beds we're having. And I, and I made the assumption that's the number of people we would be having. I did not think about, you know, an occupancy higher than the number of beds, that, that he did not feel that this would justify any redesigning of any intersections. It clearly would require doing something on Lawrence Road. And his concern was the impact on the culvers on Old Central and Clemson Street, that that traffic movement is going to deteriorate those culvers, because they have, they're the original ones from the length it's built. And so we're looking to have some sort of impact fee to pay his part to help, because over time, when all the other development occurs up there, we need to replace that. But the value of the, of the traffic study is to create the benchmark to where we have a clear understanding of where the triggers are gonna be, when we are gonna start having to address the various intersections, whether it's going out to ninety-three or to one thirty-three. And also, it's not reflected in here, but one of the things that we asked of Mr. Kennedy is that during construction, that this construction traffic will come off of ninety-three, not off of one twenty-three. Because, one, the pounding that those two roads are gonna take will really hasten their, the demise of those culvers. But also, it's just, we'd rather them come in that way because of the concerns that we had of traffic there at Calhoun and one thirty-three and, and to have a lot of construction traffic coming in that way just makes it even worse. So we're looking to have them come in off of by Eagles and Cat.
Mount Tabor.
Thank you, John.
We say nine-three, you're talking about to Mount Tabor?
Yeah.
That's okay.
That's correct. And they're not gonna be happy about it either, but it's, it's a, it's a lot less traffic on that side. And so it'll be a little bit more, probably more secure in its nature, depending on where deliveries and construction workers are coming from, but they'll learn to come out of the way.
Todd, the reason I sent my email, I, I guess I don't understand the purpose of the traffic study totally. I mean, I certainly understand the baseline and that's valuable and that's important. But it sounds like we've already made the assumption that adding over four hundred beds and, you know, at least four hundred cars is not gonna impact the traffic to the degree that we need to make some other plans to mitigate that. I mean, I mean, if, you know, I drive by Calhoun every day, three or four times a day probably, and wow, and we're saying there's no problem there? I mean, that's hard for me to grasp, so I need, I need Nathan or somebody to sit me down and say, what's the purpose of this traffic study? If it's not to determine the magnitude, the volume of traffic that's gonna come, flow through there, and what's gonna be the increase on top of, I mean, I don't know where we're at right now from a technical perspective, but it's, you know, there are periods during the day, several times, that that traffic is just backed up. There at the red light on Calhoun, backed up to around the corner, you got traffic straight back, you got traffic going to Calhoun and Clemson, and you got the one-way street, even sometimes that's backed up, you know. And, and I, there must be some data already.
Yes.
On the magnitude, the volume of traffic that's there. And I don't know what constitutes an acceptable level, acceptable vol, acceptable volume. So if Nathan can discuss all this at the workshop, I'd sure appreciate that. It makes me much more knowledgeable in terms of grasping the magnitude of this.
I think that'd be very beneficial and that I pose all those questions and concerns to him and that I think he has answers to all those questions.
Great.
And whether him to address them, the need for fear of the speaking or if he was quoted.
So the, the traffic study is gonna happen. Do you know when it will happen?
No, I don't. And that historically, I know in the past that we've, we've...
Want to do it with the students.
Yeah, because it, you know, we want it with this normal cycle of traffic. And that's not the case in the summertime. So...
September, October.
Kind of. It'd probably be Septemberish or something like that, we'd probably wish to do it.
Do you guys like know what, like what, what days you're gonna study?
No, these are the kind of things that I, I'm not privy to the conversations and the details that Nathan had with, with Todd Kennedy on, on this, other than he talked to me, said, we're gonna do the study, and Todd agreed to do it, to fund it. And I don't get the details of it, or I'm not sure of the art brand.
When's the workshop?
We need to set that.
That's gonna be set. So what I'm hearing is generally speaking, with the, with the one really cool idea of trying to keep that commercial space and sort of flex space, that, and make sure we try to pin down the numbers on some of these units, try to find the density or the occupancy. There's no major issues.
I think those are major issues.
They, oh, those are major issues. But assuming that, making the assumptions that we've made, you know, we're gonna do it for townhomes. We're gonna make that up and see the same as all the rest where townhomes are allowed, F-two unrelated. We can look at the quads to try to accommodate the situation of couples that aren't married, figure out how to do that. But the rest of them certainly would be one-per-bedroom. We got, we need to put in a number for canopy coverage. But I, I think that the coverage that he's, he's describing here is gonna be greater than the coverage we normally require for subdivision, which I know there's debate about that's adequate number. And I want definitions on open space, a common open space, and clarify that. But are there any other issues that you all have, or you want to link back to, to Todd?
Well, it's not, it's not Todd's, but I think it's the city, it's us. With the traffic study, I think it needs to be not just this project, but also Kingswood that we just heard about, that's gonna now dump thirty-six families, so, and that's at least two cars per person, and five, six, seven, eight, what his data shows. So that's, while it's, it's a little, it's certainly not the same magnitude, that's gonna contribute to it. And then I think I heard you say that there was another one that was coming, and I'm questioning is that, will it be in this area right here where it's green, that's that line there blue?
Yeah, that is the area.
Okay. Cause that's on, that's on Old Central Road too, so we got, and that's gonna be a big one, you said?
Yes, well, it's fifty acres. And then we have Miss Adele's property, the big chunk of her land is a little bit further up, Clemson Street, between where you go and you've got Kennedy's place and, or left into Kingswood, is all the land up there on the right, hers and is all for sale. Now, the density for all the others is gonna be more traditional. None of it's in, none of it's in the city, so all have to be annexed in. And I don't see any of it coming in, maybe R-seven, R-twelve, you know, that kind of thing. And that's what, like, Kingswood is equivalent to R-seven, I think, is about six hours square foot long.
Yeah, somewhere around that.
But they won't be any more dense than that. And, and so far, the initial conversation, they're all single-family homes for sale. They're not student housing, not rentals or anything. The pricing will probably keep them from ever being rentals.
You're talking about this proposed new development that we haven't seen yet?
Sadly, to keep it from being student rentals keeps it from being...
All, all the developments going on up there, the only one that I've, that is, that's being discussed is having any student housing component is the one we're talking about right now. All the other developments up here are anticipating to be single-family, detached, traditional neighborhoods.
So will we get some sort of tree inventory, tree information from this one?
Again, there's not a priority to PD, but you can, we can make, make that, request that.
Well, I'm just looking at the, the aerial view. I have all the green, like, what I'm...
Well, they're, I've, we've walked through it, and it's a lot of pine, and that it's, and there are, the core property also goes up pretty far. There are also little trees with their own core property, which is, you know, when we, when we do a tree inventory, it's, it's interesting, because depending upon the type of development, if it's a traditional R-twenty or R-twelve neighborhood, where they don't have a buffer requirement, because we don't have buffering on requirements of these large firehouses, you can build junior on, and that's the way it is in R-twenty or R-twelve. And that, and so if you, if we make somebody do a tree inventory, and they have the right to cut them all down, why don't we make them do a tree inventory unless they're, unless we're going to make them keep some of the trees? Well, we don't have that mechanism in our land development regulations for that type of development, R-twenty and R-twelve. Now, we do have a canopy coverage requirement. And the reason we have in the past required a inventory is that you get more credit by saving that forty-four inch diameter tree than planting three two-and-a-half inch diameter trees. But if you're gonna save that tree and use it as part of your canopy credit, you've got to protect that tree, which we're gonna talk about here in a few minutes. And so before we ask Mr. Kennedy to do a tree inventory, this is one of the things we can talk about in the workshop, is to make sure what we can do with that information. Because unless we're gonna try to get him to preserve that tree in the middle of the park.
So we have no, we have no avenue to do that?
Well, as a plan developer, we have a lot of flexibility, but we want to play, I just wanted to walk through the whole process as to, you know, what we're gonna do with that information that we gathered.
One of the things I just want to remind everybody of, and I'm for saving everything as much as possible, but you guys have to remember that this property is not currently in the city and it is seeking annexation. So if we make this project too expen, at a certain point, it's cheaper for him to get his sewer from the county than to me, I'm not saying get everything we can and, and make it the best for both people and everything, but I'm just saying if we load, if we load this thing up, there's a certain threshold where it's cheaper for him just to run the county sewer line to his property, take that park he was gonna donate, put four new buildings on it, because there is no zoning in Pickens County, none. So, and then you still got all the traffic, all the impact, more dense, and none of the improvement he promised, because he doesn't have to do it to get the sewer from the city. So, like I said, I'm for everything and I want it to be a good project. And I know not everybody's gonna be happy with it, but I do feel like what's most beneficial for the city is not bend over backwards or anything, but just to remember that he does have the option to just say, at a certain price point, I'm gonna get my sewer from the county, bye, y'all.
I get that, but I don't like, I don't like the idea of he controls the city, kind of hostage to get what he wanted. And that's kind of what you're saying. If you don't let me do this, I'm gonna go just do it.
Well, no, well, there's a, there's a price point. It's gonna, I think I heard tossed around somewhere, he mentioned it's gonna cost him a couple of million dollars. And now he's gotta pay extra taxes to the city, so that increases. So it's like a short-term versus a long-term. So at a certain point, it's gonna cost him X to build it as part of the city, and it's gonna cost him X to build it staying outside of the city. And as long as he can stay under X to be in the city, he's more than happy to do that, because it's easier for him to get to the sewer.
Do you know what that point would be?
I don't. We haven't run those calculations and, but John's, you know, theoretical position is a, is a good one, because that is the, that is sort of the equation we're dealing with, leading on annexation, as it costs the pros and cons. And there are a lot of incentives, and we're about to strike that balance to where everybody comes out ahead and thinks it's possible to come up with a win-win situation for an annexation like this.
I think the last thing anybody would want is this to go in, and the city to see no tax revenue, but still bear all the brunt of all that traffic coming in and all that development and all that, and not see any of the additional revenue that would be generated from the tax base. I think that would be a, a big lose for the city.
We did talk about asking him about that tree canopy statement, the guy in this.
Yes.
There will be no requirements for consent.
Yeah, I thought that was, I mean, you...
That's an odd statement.
That's kind of a big...
Yeah. So we've been talking about trees.
Well, the big thing is, look at the drawings, you got, you got, you should tell we got a lot of canopy in there. Chose, we got, we've been drawing, we've chosen, and then did a sketch about landscaping, said that we have, we have a lot of tree in there. Do you think you can pass on that?
I don't think a lot of trees in this drawing. I'm just gathering along the roads and along the Albertson, but I'm still interested in the...
This one here is called...
PD, that's a good one.
Yeah, good way to, yeah, cause this shows the trees on all through the park lot. And these are the ones that, that are, he's, this is calling now. And it's gonna be, there's only more.
Yeah, that one.
I know there's a pile, I can get the link. Here's the one that I was referring to.
Okay, I was looking at this one and now...
Yeah, get, see, I think so, the flip side of that one.
There, yeah, all those.
I did, there is a table in here.
You know, I can't recall if this particular iteration of the planning commission had chosen your preferred workshop name.
We have like the third.
I think so, yeah.
It was Tuesday.
It's Tuesday.
Yeah, it's the fourth Tuesday.
I know.
Is it the fourth or the third?
I think, I thought it was the last one, that was the, the only one. The reason we chose, suggested that was, all of the others are booked up, the standing committee chose, suggested that was, uh, all of the others are booked up, the standing committee board, and that's open. I think it's the last Tuesday of the month, typically, for most months.
Was it day time, was it during this one day?
Five, seven.
Five, seven.
Was the, was the standard.
Yeah.
So, what would that be, this, for, if we wanted to try to get together for...
Last key week of March is the thirty-first, and I'll be out of town.
June thirty-first?
May thirty-first.
May thirty-first.
I would be too.
That's right.
I'll be here.
And the twenty-fourth is...
I'll be out of town.
On the avenue.
Well, may I, can I suggest something? Because we're in here, who knows what it's gonna be? We assume we're gonna be, we're having sort of normal. We, we don't know for sure.
And we can be, we can, given, I say we pick the time that works best for y'all.
Yes.
We figure out the place and make it available to the public and anything else we need to do on that.
Okay.
Um, it's not necessarily to be live sort of workshop, um, but, uh, I think it's more important that we get as many commissioners together in a room. And that can be at eight in the morning, five at night, and any day of the week, um, other than Saturday, noon and Saturday.
Let's do it, yeah.
But I, I, I think that'd be, if we could pin that thing, right?
Okay.
You guys tell me, I don't think there's any day that I can't make work, so.
I wish there's something on the nineteenth or the twenty-sixth, I would say.
The twenty-sixth, did you say?
Mm-hmm. Twenty-sixth.
I don't buy that.
I'm good.
Jackie, but I, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not leaving you out. You just need to yell at me. Would the, would major twenty-sixth work for you for a workshop?
Yeah, I'm looking while you guys are throwing out dates. I'm, I'm feverishly looking through, make sure I'm available.
What time?
Five o'clock, is that it? Five to seven?
Five to seven.
Is that it? Todd?
We can do it anytime at five to seven, the worst.
All right. Um, I may be, I may be a little late, but I can make it like, like five-thirty. Is that okay?
I, I'm going to, uh...
Did you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be good, cause I am gonna try to invite, um, Ethan and Nathan to join. I don't know, is there any other department heads that might be...
Honestly, with...
I might bring, possibly bring Tony to talk about the park, but, but maybe not. I think, but definitely Nathan.
Yeah.
And, uh, um, so more closer to business hours, getting our staff to be able to be available. But yeah, but at five o'clock would work great.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think, okay. I think I'm, I think I'm okay.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll plan on, on the mission workshop.
Five, five, twenty-six.
With this at five o'clock on the twenty-sixth, location is TBD.
Correct.
She's okay to join at five-thirty?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we, we don't know about Curtis's availability either.
Right, right. All right. So, do we need a form to move this to next week? Are we good?
No, I've been relating what I heard tonight to Todd, saying that we have concerns about pinning some of these things down specifically. The drawing is not causing anybody concerns. We wanna make sure that we can get what's in the drawing. And that we have a flexible idea of the work space and, um, and then obviously issues, and then we wanna, it's more probably Todd will go along or whatever. Nathan asked him, but we didn't answer that question.
Well, Kim, is possibly a, something that would tell us the difference between the cost to him to have it in the city versus the cost to him to leave it in town?
Who would do that?
Yeah. And you know, and I think, I, I remember, uh, at, uh, he said, he was on a public meeting, that he made a couple of million, I think. I did hear that.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I think it'd be a little bit tougher to nail down. You'd have to do, like, if you're adding in this requirement, this requirement, you'd have to do an overall construction analysis, and not just, okay, it's gonna cost you extra on the sewer, and if I save these four trees, it's gonna add. It's, it's a little, it's a little bit tougher to get into that way, but at a cer- at a certain point, he will say, well, it's two million this way.
Yeah. I think that if I remember correctly, that the estimates we had on the, his upfront fees on this, due this project were approaching a million dollars. And I guarantee that the county is not gonna cost you a million dollars to, to, to build in. And that's just, these are like one-time upfront fees. Um, and so that, you know, there's a chunk right there, nine-hundred fifty-five thousand estimated, you know, upfront revenue. Those are in plan review fees, permit fees, tap fees, general fund impact fees, water impact fees. These are all just fees. So, it's a million dollars to do business here. And, uh, so there's that, that's half of that's gone. And then, then we can give you a supplement, and, uh, and then, you know, our canopy coverage requirement, tree planting requirement, our stormwater requirements are, we're stringent. But, um, but we can, we can ask him, because what I, I plan to do is tomorrow is to, I'll share what we heard tonight, because I don't know, when, when will Todd be able to listen to this?
Um, this one will be...
Okay. And, uh, I'll encourage him to dial in so he can hear it for himself, which is good. Let him know, let him know we're having a workshop and try to get him there as not a representative. And he may have to phone in, depending on what we're doing, but, um, so thank you all for, for doing that. That's pretty helpful.
Now, we, uh, please. Anything listed on here, do we have any boundary items?
No.
Number six is discussion items. And that's the last part that's just on here. I learned about the, um, problems that, that stop size with all the construction and everything.
And I'm confused there, because I'm not sure about protection of trees, sidewalks. What is, uh, what I'm passing out is something said, there's protections of trees that I'm passing out, but should I have your questions about, um... I think that the way we're leaning on this, like, is that, um, when a new project starts, we fly over the area that's grown, just under that, the conditions below the sidewalks currently beforehand. Share that with the developer, and say, you're making this whole before you get done off in this. Like downtown, uh, at the hotel there, we except for Sloan Street, the whole section of, not College Avenue, did have to repair all of that and bring it back to the way it was before. Um, we learned our lesson with Earl Street and some of the other, just had a good, uh, vegetation. But that's, that's kind, that's how we do it now, Elaine, to where, um, in, in fact, usually in most cases, they end up, is, it gives up, is better than it was, because it might have been, it might not have been broken up, but it's older. And, uh, and, and you have the construction project that it's, you know, they're rep, they're repainted. Occasionally, you can resurface it. Um, but does that answer your question of how, what we're doing, how we're doing without that?
Well, I, I think it's a little bit different. The, um, I'm looking at the, you sent me the site management agreement, and, and I wanted to say, there is nothing on there that indicates this belongs to the city of Clemson. There's no, there's no, um, anything that identifies as a city document. There's nobody from the city that signed it, as I, as best I can tell. Unless, that's not it signed, unless it's the original. But this has parts of it in it about sidewalks and pedestrian pass that remain unrestricted at all times.
Mm-hmm.
And all of these things. And I think Rick has some comments that, that hasn't happened. And so, I don't know what the answer is, how to fix that, so we don't have another issue like this that so negatively impacts a residential neighborhood.
So, can I speak?
Cause is it okay if he speaks now?
To the chair, and then, and then...
Yeah, it's a, just a, it's an open discussion. Come on.
Rick Ware. So, the majority of the time that we've lived back there over the past sixteen months or so, we have had large red dirt, this big, many times. There have just been, because of the high lifts, bringing the red mud out, tracking it down the roads. And then we run our cars over it. And then our cars, I won't say I did it, but I'll say other people might have done it that live in my household, drive that into my driveway. We've had high lifts that have been in driveways. Mr. Dixon, they just pulled into his drive. We've had tractor trailers drive through Kay's yard, Kay Barrett's yard, in, across Mr. Dixon's line. So, I got to thinking about it. I said, you know, we have nothing in this city that says, you know, you're bringing a lot of debris and sediment and things from the insides of this construction area onto our roads. I'll digress. One moment. Mr. Dixon, Mark Dixon, Dr. Dixon told me a story that happened early savings in Camelot. I cannot find any documentation of this. Some of you that have been here for some time that were older may have know about this situation. But while they were developing Camelot, this happened. And if you've been around here long enough, you know red mud, it gets wet, can be very slick. I ride in his motorcycle, came down through there, hit the brakes. Motorcycle went out from under him. He slammed into a car and killed him. And that's Mark Dixon's story. And he said, he doesn't know. He said he was here from seventy-one. I asked Elaine, and she said you were here from seventy-five, seventy-six. So, he did not remember it. I know I was still in, well, elementary school, so I wasn't paying any attention to him, even outside Greenville, so. But I got to thinking about it. So, I started doing some research, and I found a city in Utah, and that's where this, this ordinance, uh, comes from. And it talks about keeping these developers from doing that. We asked for wheel washing. What we got was a, was a guy out there with garden hose with a faucet. That's what we got. I laughed when they were excavating the five-foot that I told you about earlier. When they were excavating that, it ran out of one-twenty-three, and I was in my truck. And, uh, as he was pulling out of there, the mud was falling off the side of the truck. And I said, well, you got the wheels washed, but you didn't get the side of the truck. So, we had dirt going all the way down there. Many, many times, I picked up rocks this size, and I noticed somebody put that same gravel down at, uh, uh, Zaxby's here lately. Um, can you imagine what the rock that size would do to your windshield? If, if, if a car picks it up, is it gonna swing it back up into your car? Especially if you're doing forty miles an hour. And I picked up two or three of them. I, actually, I, I picked up several. I got them at the house. Um, they're, they're just in a little pile. I thought, maybe that'd be a good example of, this is what I picked up off a one-twenty-three. So, we do not need to allow these developers to come in here and run over us. One of the best things about, when I was looking for a lake property, I, I refused to look at Hartwell. I was looking at Kiwi. I was constantly going to Kiwi. Why? Because, look at Hart, Hartwell's history, up, up and down, up and down. And it's been great since I bought a lake house here. It kept it pretty level. But, um, but I didn't look at that. But when I saw a house in Clemson on Lake Hartwell, I said, wow, that's really good. I said, Karen, we should go look at this house. Well-built, good neighborhood. Still to be determined if it's still gonna be a good neighborhood. We'll see. Um, but, but we have Clemson. We are Clemson. These are, and these, a lot of these developers, I do believe they want that too, Clemson address. I tell people that I have two of the best things in the world going for me on Lake Hartwell. I have Lake Hartwell for where I live. I have Lake Hartwell, and I have Clemson, and a Clemson address. And I really do believe that developers want, there's a lot of benefits. We came from Travelers Rest, and I had twenty acres up there. So, I had to take all my garbage off all the time. I didn't have, I finally got water, but there was a period of time where we didn't have water. There's a lot of benefits that, that we, um, you know, we have, just living in the Clemson, so.
So, what do you think?
But to get back to protection of this.
Yeah, what do you think we should do?
I think we should adopt this. Now, the only piece, when I read back through it, that it's at the very end, and I think, uh, Todd made some comments to this, that there's a portion of this in the fines. And, you know, I don't know what we need to do from a fine standpoint. I, I like, I do like the idea of being strict and shutting them down.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I do think that, uh, that would be a, a benefit. Uh, wheel wash stations can range from everything, from a, like you said, from garden hose, which doesn't, doesn't meet the job, and it, and there's no penalty for them to not do it. Um, until I sent, uh, some stuff this weekend, uh, from one of my PMs that sits on the board here at Clemson that's called Extreme.
Oh, I haven't...
Uh, I forget what it is. But basically, it's big, heavy angle iron, and you run like a rumble strip, and it knocks all the mud and stuff out there. They use them in California. This company's out of California. But you can also have the, put in the full-blown that wheel wash, that when you drive the truck up there, it just, it's a bunch of high-pressure spray, uh, that's washing those wheels to get them clean before they get out and drag those onto the road. But that's, that's what the disordinance would help do, is prevent that. And, uh, we don't have anything like that. I don't know that we have anything like that in the state of South Carolina, um, as well, so. But, uh, we don't, we don't have to follow, we don't have to build everything for the developers. They'll come. I promise you, they'll come. We are Clemson. We have that address. And we need to take advantage of it, especially now.
So, these are called extreme plates? That's the link that you sent me?
Yeah, extreme plates was the link that...
Yeah. And I just sent you that document, uh, from the other cities, if you would share it with the planning commission. I just think that's unacceptable. I think we are responsible for making sure that kind of thing does not negatively impact our residential like that.
I think, man, I think as far as parking the dri- I mean, I understand we've switched over to dirt, but as far as parking driveways, cutting three yards and things like that, I believe that's just calling the police for vandalism or trespassing or something like that. I mean, if I came home and there was a, a high lift parked in my driveway, I'd call the damn police department and have it towed. I mean, you know, I mean, it's, that's just me. That, that may not shut down the development or anything like that, but if I come home and it's in my driveway, I'm getting, I'm not gonna go, I'm not going to find somebody telling them to move it. I'm calling the cops and have it towed.
We had a transfer truck the other day, two weeks ago. He went around the curb, cause we took down the sign and said, there's no outlet. So, he didn't know any better, and he backed up. I'm watching him, and of course, you know my situation the last couple of weeks, but I'm out there, uh, watching him in the exit circuit. But I was out there watching him. And, uh, he started to come into Mr. Jones's driveway, and I said, do not, do not come into Mr. Jones's driveway. The guy got out of the truck, moved his garbage can, pulled that transfer truck down into that driveway, so he can get back out. And that was at, with a representative from the development there. And you know what his response was? Well, he's got twenty-foot right away. I said, uh-uh. No, we're not buying that.
No, that's, well, that's what I'm saying. And stuff like, stuff like that, you get to call the police department.
Hey, that's what I'm trying to do. I mean, what we, what we've experienced is this development came in and run us over. You know, that's really what's happened. It has, I have sent hundreds, I'm talking about hundreds of texts, pictures, talked to council probably a dozen times or more, you know, and saying, we've gotta do this, we've gotta do this, we've gotta... talked to council probably a dozen times or more, you know, and saying, we've got to do this, we've got to do this, we've got to do this. Now, if we'd known about a site management agreement that happened in September of twenty, things might be different. But we didn't know about it till last week. Now things are different.
So were you, Todd, were you responsible for getting that site management agreement together and found?
I was the one who initiated the idea from the city. Uh, after we did the grand walkie center in Earl Street, that I felt like we've been sort of run, run a run-of-shot over by the developers. They beat us up downtown pretty bad. And then we were fining them and they would write thousand-dollar checks all day long, give them attitude. And we didn't have a mechanism for shutting them down. So we said, well, that's the only thing that's going to get their attention. So we came up with this idea of having a site management agreement. Um, I pulled together the police department, fire department, uh, stormwater engineering, public works, administration, business license zoning, there's a planning of all of that. Building codes is in there. And, uh, so all of us got together and wrote what we thought was the appropriate agreement. It is more four times as we wrote it. We don't find them anymore. You get two warnings and then you're shut down. Before we had a warning, a fine and a shutdown. The fine is a little bit tricky from a state standpoint. We're not really clear on that if we can do that. Anyway, um, and so-
So it's functioning now?
It's functioning. It's been functioning for every major project we've had since then. And we've, uh, had to shut down every project, including, uh, Dockside, we got shut down, uh, last week. Um, the, or, or again, I think, yeah. Anyway, and so those are, uh, uh, again, this was an internal mechanism to provide, uh, a, a, um, means by which the city can, uh, have some control over these projects because the only thing they listen to is when they're being under threat of shutting, shut down. And what we have found is after that occurs, our problems just go way down. And so most projects, Dockside has been on two strikes for six or eight months. They got two strikes pretty quick. And then they ran a pretty clean operation after that. I know, I swear, make, uh, feel differently about it. But the, uh, but based on what the police and stormwater who oversee the issues of traffic and blocking and dirt on the road, that kind of stuff, that's not a planning code issue.
So does the city have a point person who oversees a project like that? Or do you have to go to stormwater?
Yeah.
That's crazy. We should, you shouldn't have to do that. You should have some overarching thing.
I'll, I'll be happy to help you understand it, but we do not, that would be a whole nother staff person or division because every department is responsible for their own aspects of it. We don't, I don't get in the business of telling Bitchy how deep to put the sewer lines. He doesn't tell us where to plant the trees and that, uh, that they, that, that they don't tell them where to, uh, put their signage. I mean, it's, every, where every, the police handle road closures, sidewalk closures, engineering, stormwater, dealing with pump right away and, and tracking the mud. Um, where we deal with fire safety, life safety issues on-site and, uh, and building code issues. Those are all in our departments.
Would it be possible to get a, a call sheet together that might help simplify? Because that, that was one of my questions about this, when I thought, I've seen some comments on this issue. And I was like, well, who do I, how do I know who to call so that I'm not making eight phone calls or whatever? And just either have that tagged on at the beginning of that and to kind of raise awareness for these site management plans?
I think that's a good idea, John. And what we're going, we're looking at doing is, uh, and we're, we're kind of, you know, kicking around some different ideas, but, uh, I think we're going to have like a splash page on the city website. It says something about projects. We've been talking about doing this in general, a lot of heat and call and time. What are they doing with these? What are they doing here? And so what we could just say, well, here's what's happening in various projects, which is not that difficult because they're not that big a project. Um, and, and in there say, here's this, here's the, if you have issues related to bottom of highway, to unsafe streets or to working after hours or lights or anything like that, here's who to call. And, um, and provide that information online to where people, it, it would be a call tree, like you said, to where they know who to reach out to. But again, that's not my decision, um, but, um, and I'm going to be a part of making it better and figuring out how to, how we need to make this, uh, you know, work better. It has worked wonderfully well for the city. It has made a huge difference in the way we have, what we've gotten back and, and what we were prevented from having happen in the city. It's been a very successful program. Um-
Do you think it's worked well with Dockside? Do you think it's worked well with Dockside? I mean, I'm hearing all this stuff that this has, this business-
I'll just, I'll go ahead and tell you this. You say it worked well, but every, one of the things in that document, and we're turning this into that document instead of the other one, they're two separate things, by the way. But I don't, I do not see an ordinance about mud, but I've lived it for the last sixteen months. So, uh, let me just say this. One of those key points in that document was that all deliveries would be made on-site. That is literally hundreds of days of violations. There hasn't been one or two deliveries made on-site. Not one or two. They were making them on, from the road from day one.
I'm not going to argue that point because I don't live over there, but I'm going to ask, have you called in a violation to alert?
I did not, I did not know about this.
Okay, well, I was just going to say, because it's, it's, and that's what I'm saying about raising the awareness is because it may work great if nobody reports anything and nothing happens.
Right. As we've all heard, they can't be all places at all times, right? So you can't be all eyes everywhere. I have, last week I went down to the cul-de-sac and told three people that were down there that you have to move your cars now because of state law that you cannot park in the cul-de-sac. These are people down there either taking pictures or a couple of them were taking stuff off the job site. And I told the job site manager that and he said, yeah, I know they are. I said, okay. What, I'm talking crawling through a locked gate. And, uh, so he knows about it. But, um, but the biggest thing is we did not know this was what was permitted, what was not permitted. We were told from day one, we are going to do everything on this job site from inside out. You will never know we're there. I can give you a number of, a lady in Pennsylvania or Boston or someplace, when we built this project and you can call her as a reference. You know, references work. You always give the one that, that still give you the best review. So, um, you know, this has been our experience. But my experience was primarily with, um, with the mud on the road and the dirt and the dust and, and, and so forth. And it has kept, I mean, they would go out sweep the road, you know? But they tracked the mud onto the road. They didn't go immediately behind it and sweep it. They would sweep it at the end of the day. Well, that's kind of too late in the, you know, daylight and the dawn.
Can I make a suggestion, Elaine? When we have a workshop, I'll have Nathan and, and Steve Campfors address this with y'all. If you've got people who are-
At the same time, we're going to do the other project?
Yeah, we'll wrap up, I'll see if they're available.
Okay, we'll put it, I mean, you have to put it on the agenda, right? Or we can't do it.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
But to get back to this ordinance about doing that, unless you can, Todd, you can send me an ordinance that shows that we have something about mud and sediment tracking it on the road. I'd love to see that.
Yeah, we do have an ordinance. What we have is that it reaches a site plan.
But we need to get this ordinance, in an ordinance so that everybody knows about it. Site plan, it ain't working if nobody knows about it. Because I can't, I can't be the eye.
They're the place that you post it at.
And I mean, that's what, I, I like the ordinance. I mean, y'all can decide what you want to do for the penalty, so that's kind of fair to tell. And I could tell, yes, I like the fact that you get three strikes, we shut you down. I like that. That's fine with me. Um, you know, so, but-
I think, I think it's tough to do an ordinance because it's going to, you're going to have site variances that where you word thing. So like, we'll take, for example, we say, oh, we're going to look at this project and we're going to write an ordinance around what happened in your experience. Well, the same thing could happen slightly different of, oh, I left this project site, but it was onto this gravel road and then out onto the highway. So the way it's written, I'm technically not at fault. Where with individual site plans, it's tailored to each specific site.
So maybe ordinance needs to have a, a concrete or a site plan that is fine with all-
I think it's in, it's in there now. The site plans are now required for the building process, right?
What was the last question?
The site plans are now required. There's no way to start a development without one at this point.
Well, not every project requires one. We don't require them for single-family homes, uh, and things of that nature, but-
Development, then, not-
There's any major project that you would think would have one. Um, McDonald's and Chick-fil-A where they re-did theirs. Because a lot of that, you know, dealt with road closures and blocking sidewalks and such. And so, um, yeah, you have to have that in place. And there are two com- two components to it. There's the agreement that they signed and spelled out a lot. And then there's a multi-page document that, that follows that or is attached to that that spells out in much greater detail what happens in each phase and where the movement's going to go. Because a lot of these projects that they are built over, you know, you have, and so whatever age they're in, the first six months is different than the next six months. And, um, so the site wars, it's what's happening inside changes over time. And that, uh, the plan spells out how that's going to come. This is where traffic is going to come. This is where it's going to be in six months. This is the general phasing. And that in there, that's where a lot of the stuff is spelled out about wheel washes and, uh, because like you said, John, they're not necessarily on every site.
Yeah. And this, this may be ridiculous, but it's an idea I thought just about, because like you said, if you guys would have known about the plan from the get-go, it'd probably be a different story. Is there any way to do a requirement, say, on the site to do a banner, like they've all got the built by so-and-so or Darden Construction or whatever on it? Says, site plan available at www.cityofclemson.org slash whatever, or whatever. And that way every site, you pass by, you're like, okay, this is exactly where my site plan is. I can go to it and I can see this specific plan versus having to, and that raises the awareness of there is one, here's how to get to it, you can read it versus I got a note to go to the city's website and see a project or something.
That's a very good idea. And, uh, again, I, you know, I, I was talking to several people down downtown last week and, uh, I know, uh, understand that, uh, a couple of people had some issues with this council meeting and that, um, that we're talking about how to make this better. And, um, and so I think that's a great idea.
Well, let's, let's look at, at an ordinance that requires a site plan to be done with an outline of what it should be and where we can find it.
Well, I'd like to, I, I don't know that we're, this is the right body to be addressing this, to be honest. This is someone out of our purview. I think what I'd rather do is talk to our city engineer who's responsible, responsible with all of the erosion and stormwater management in the city and see what our stormwater ordinance says about this. Because a lot of this is already codified about erosion and traffic.
Send it to me and, send it to me. I'd like to see it.
So I don't know what it's, where we were at with that, but I think we might be, you know, I think that they need to be in this conversation, not the people that have the conversation tonight.
That's right.
All right. No problem. I'll keep, I'll keep up.
Keep bugging.
Just that Hunter Avenue is your next one. That, that they've already been here speaking and they don't want mud in the road. So I just have to explain, John, but unless I put it in an ordinance about keeping the roads like they need to be, we got, it just-
Well, they're over there.
And, and, and these developers, guys, these developers come in and they promise us everything. They promise us the world. You need to take it.
Just, you know, I only live about, I only live about three blocks from the Hunter Development. So I actually drove by there tonight because I saw there was kicking up stuff about it on Nextdoor or whatever. So I drove by to take a look. And yeah, it's cleared a lot or whatever, but the road didn't, it seemed cleared.
Well, I was there the other day and it rose, but once you start getting it going, the red mud and it gets in those wheel tracks and stuff, it's, anyway, there you go.
Um, but an extension of Clemson Cottage, but it's not really connected to it. I don't think of what they're calling it.
I was looking for, I lost internet connection here, which is something around. But, uh, apparently we posted that, um, site management plan on, on our website in December of twenty, that it was posted on our website. But, um, because-
Where is it? Because I'm, I can't find it.
How do we find it? How do we find it?
Uh, I don't know. I'm just, I'm losing the emails.
I just, I just think the average citizen is unaware that that is even a thing. Because they, I mean, and it's, and I'm not, I'm not blaming that on anybody, but like you said, like, oh, we didn't know about it until two weeks ago and-
We would, we'll, we'll, I'll say this, and I don't want this to happen, that, again, I think I'm proud of what we did. This is, this was a direct response to protect our community. We had nothing like this. And this has made a huge difference and given us a mechanism because we can come back to it and you would say, you, you signed this and if you violate these things, you're three strikes and you're shut down. And we've shut down almost every major project in the city. And, and as a result of that, then they straighten up and fly right.
So what, when they, when you say shut it down, is that a day? Is that an hour? Is that a week? Is that a month?
Usually it's at least a day because we go in, we shut down, even actually send everybody offsite. And then frequently, there's not much for them to fix other than start following the plan. But what we require is that they resubmit a site management plan. And in some cases, that's just putting in bold a will not track mud. And that, um, but in other cases, it's really been an opportunity to correct something and then we then have to approve it. But typically they get shut down and usually by the end of the next day, they're backed up. But the impact that has, and the reason this is so valuable is massive because they're sending home seven different crews. And their crews are behind one another. Well, this crew is going, well, can I come to work more? I don't know. Well, I'm not. I'm going to go to Macon and do my job in there. I'll pick you up in three days. That goes, all of a sudden, that can cost them tens, twenty, thirty thousand dollars. And more importantly, two weeks of time. And so it is a very powerful tool. And it's been very effective. And I know there's been frustration. Uh, another thing I learned from, uh, from Nathan, who I'd like him to talk to about this, is the, the gentleman who used red water and, and mud. That, and that he took, he had a bottle in his office and he'd take like a, you know, fingernails worth of red clay and drop it in there. And because I remember there was a creek when, when, uh, Downhill Hill was being built and he, and Earl Street was being built. And there was the creek that kind of daylights and goes underneath, uh, you know, where the Astro is. And it was just running red. And I took a picture and I said, is this coming from one of our projects and our site? And he said, because whoever's responsible for this has got to pay for this. This is destructive. And I, and I knew one, I, I found a guy at Hills. He said, there's not a breach here. And I said, how come that be? He said, we went back there like three days later after it quit raining. There's no mud in there. He said, if that had been mud, that the creek would have looked different. It would have been all silt stuff that was red. Anyway, it was very interesting for me to learn how little particulate it takes to turn that water red and, and, and it, and it looks a lot worse than it is. Now, I'm not saying that what Mr. Ware was complaining about isn't valid or that we don't have breaches that do create mudslides. But when you live around here, you're going to have red water no matter what you do. And then the question is whether or not it's actually leaving silt behind because that's where you damage your creeks and your roads and such. But, um, uh, but rapid this conversation up and over is that, uh, you know, we're, we know that, that this was never designed to be, you know, it was an internal mechanism to, so we could keep the, uh, the projects running a rough shot in the city. And it has worked highly effectively at that. Uh, and that we get complaints from, uh, our, most of our complaints come from our, the neighbors around any project. This is the way it works. And that, and sometimes we, we're the ones who identify it. You know, we, we see it happen and nobody has to call us. It's not unusual. Somebody says, someone is out there working at five o'clock in the morning. And if they are, then they, if they didn't get a permit, a noise permit, then they get a ticket.
See, that's, that's about as far as doing the call sheet. Like, I wouldn't know, do I call planning codes? Do I call the police department?
No, I think it's a great idea. And I think that by having the call sheet, but I really like the idea. They all have some kind of construction fence that says something about, um, you know, to learn more about this project or, or we have questions about this project or concerns or something like that. I'm not sure how we can put it in a way that's-
Yeah, because I don't even know, the average person will know what site management plan, like, oh, this is what I need to read to know the word of complaint, like.
But it's a great idea to put something out there.
Like onsite, yeah.
And then have something that takes them to our, our home- And then have something that takes them to our home page where we can guide them through. Where, hey, tell them what's going on, what's it gonna be, where they are in the process. And then any documentation like this. And then, here are the guidelines that they've agreed to for the development of the site and that kind of stuff. But again, as you've gathered through some of these conversations, that the vast majority of the issues related to these construction sites are not in my department. Do not affect Planning and Codes.
But that document started with you, right?
I'm not shirking my responsibility for that.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying, we've got to have some way to oversight for a project.
That's why I think the better advertisement and information to the public would take some load off of you. Because instead of you getting ten phone calls about dockside and then you having to say, you need to call the police or I'll call so-and-so or whatever, then they can just get to them directly.
Yeah. And again, we've lived it up. We can clean all this up. And I like the point that you made about putting in on City Leverhead and having some kind of signature of, from the city employees in there, whether that might be obviously my administration or somebody that's more...
But please don't now play the public, the residents who live around the project. They're the only ones who really know. I don't know what's going on outside. And I can ride over there once a week or a month or whatever. I don't have that fear.
I don't now play anything. But we rely heavily on, and Rick has complained about issues that we've responded to. I'd like for this conversation to be held with Chief of Police and Nathan and his team. Because ninety-nine percent of complaints related to them. And that for them to say, how many times have they been out there and responded issues? And I don't have an answer to this question. Because it didn't take long. I've been cut out of the loop. Rick has gone direct to the police and Nathan for the view.
I want to make sure Jackie doesn't have any.
So, the last thing that I have to go over.
Well, I have two things I want to ask Planning and Codes to do. We don't need to talk about it anymore, but... I didn't... Jackie, do you have any other questions?
No, I'm just listening intently.
Okay. Okay. So, the other two, I'm just saying those, and just to keep up with... All right. First one is, this is coming about from some concerns I have about affordable housing. And we just heard these houses are coming in that not affordable by any stretch for even a new professor or a young person starting out. So, in some of our minority neighborhoods in particular, we have mobile homes. And those mobile homes have been grandfathered in, but they can't be replaced. And my question is, can we reconsider that in those situations where they would replace a dilapidated mobile home instead of leaving it sit there vacant or whatever, with a new one that we could put some requirements on, like being underpinned and things and that kind of stuff? But I think in our ordinance, it says if it's grandfathered in and it's more than fifty percent destroyed, you can replace it.
Um, Elaine?
And my question is, why, if we look at that, yes?
Um, I was looking, I was looking at some modular homes. And the, I know the manufactured homes these days are really fantastic. But the modular homes are nothing more than stick-built homes made in the factory. Then I looked at boxables and I looked at backyard office. They're all prefab homes, under eighty thousand dollars, delivered on foundation with water. And you have to do your water. You've got to have, you know, either city or it's septic. But it's wired. It's got the plumbing. All you've got to do is hook it up to the city or to the well and hook up your electric. And those are affordable housing. Now, I know that we have some language in the ordinance that talks about mobile homes. That's a certain era, I think pre-eighties, if I'm not mistaken. But I think we can, it would not be a burden on the homeowner to be able to replace the mobile home in those areas with one of these, with one of these homes. They're under a hundred thousand dollars easily for... And you can make them one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, whatever, depending on what you want. Up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's just that, you know, what are the ordinances on those things? Because they're very, very new. And they're along the lines of modular homes. And even the modular homes are very, very inexpensive. So...
Y'all could look at this and see if it's something we could consider. I'm just, my work with the Shaw Center has really opened my eyes to a lot of things. And there's a lady who lives in a mobile home right now that has no, I mean, heating and air conditioning. The floor is a problem. And they're gonna try to fix it for her because you can't replace it. And she can't afford to put a house there. So, let's look for ways we can, especially to help our underserved...
Well, I think that's what she's saying, though, is that instead of replacing it with a mobile home, you can put a modular on there for about the same price.
Yeah, and that maybe terminology may be wrong. My part, I mean, I've...
Yeah, there's a big difference between a modular home and a mobile home. There's a huge, huge difference. A modular home is basically any other house that you see in town. It's just trucked in and sat on a foundation. They build it. A lot of people argue that they're better because they're built entirely indoors most of the time. So, they don't suffer mold or rot or anything during the construction phase. Put them on the back of a truck and if your foundation's in place, in about two days, you're ready to go and move in.
The only difference, and I've seen a few of them years ago, had a small development when I was working in Oak County, Canada. And the biggest difference was when you walked in underneath, like a crawl space or a basement.
Ivy.
With a modular, you actually see the structure. It's too perfect. You know it's, because everything's built on a jig, so it is exact. Whereas stick-built, you know, it's pretty close.
Yeah. This is fourteen and a half, this is...
I think that's already allowed. And we've been checking because most of the zone of districts where we allow, where mobile homes exist and are allowed. And of course, again, that modular homes replace mobile homes. Because I think seventy-six, something...
Well, manufactured house, manufactured home, that's the term for modern mobile.
Yeah, they don't call them mobile.
That was...
Mine was truly mobile.
It is a mobile home.
And if I can, and if I can say something else...
Would you share that information with Art, too?
Absolutely. Absolutely. There's some, I'll send the links for the YouTube and if I can find it. I know I've found a backyard office. I have the website for that. And they will give you one, two, ten by ten, ten by fifteen, ten by thirteen. That can easily be turned into a small house. Sixty thousand dollars delivered and set up. Sixty thousand. Yeah. Yeah. So, the other thing that I was thinking about was, what can we do with Habitat for Humanity? Because they've got stores all over the place. I know that the, as a campus minister, I work with some organizations on campus that have worked with Habitat for Humanity and fixed up some houses. Is there some kind of grant that the city can provide for our low-income friends in their neighborhoods to help with their repairs, especially just humane living conditions? It's, we're in America. We should have air conditioning. We should have floorboards that we don't have to worry about, you know, stepping through. Is there any kind of grant? Is there, you know, working shower lights, electricity? Is there any kind of grant that the city can provide to some of these? With a, maybe a caveat of a certain type of income, you're able to get this? I know that there are some social security, not social security, social programs that might be available. But I know first place to start would be Habitat for Humanity. They certainly got inexpensive billing supplies to help, you know, repair some of that.
Well, I just want to keep that on our radar screen, that we keep looking for ways to improve the affordable housing part of our community as well. And then the other one, and you're all gonna be shocked when I say this, right? I think the tree ordinance needs to be expanded. And we do have one. It's not actually a bid. The tree city shall begin, that we have one, where is it? Shall begin, and use the authority of all public trees on city property. And these most areas are right to be maintained by the city. Do we have this list and where is it kept, this thing?
We really have this. Excuse me. Is the...
Tree City USA. I got information about that.
And I was part of a due poll today to try to get all the key players together to have our first meeting to start doing the actual...
So, how long's it been in the ordinance since? I mean, that's pretty bad that we've had it in there. And that language says "shall begin," so there's no timeline or anything to it. It should, to me, it should say "shall..."
Again, I want Tony to respond to that. Because I know we have various boards that we've been doing. Just overlay and flyovers where you can just bait by canopy. Do that's applicable deductions by saying everything was done with canopy. Celebrate with a color and a bat. It's, there's a crude kind of rule to come. So, we have general ideas in certain areas, but in certain areas, I think we have pretty good inventory for all of the city-owned property. But city-wide is different because that means I gotta get on everybody's property and not everybody wants to be on your property.
So, I know we are a Tree City USA. We've been that for quite a while.
This is a tree, this is a, I'll send it to you here in a second.
But that's what, we're a Tree City USA, right?
Yeah, we are.
Okay. So, that's my point. There are four criteria. You have to maintain a tree board or department. Maybe Tony's that tree board, I don't know. You have to have a community tree ordinance, spending at least, spend at least two dollars per capita on urban forestry and celebrate Arbor Day. Doesn't say anything about the overall canopy in the city. And I keep hearing, we keep hearing that there's, we only have seven and a half square miles. And we only have X number of trees on those. And if we clear cut everything, we're gonna end up with looking like a big city that doesn't have much. So, I'm kind of forward to Art, again, to send to everybody. I spent some time looking at tree ordinances in South Carolina. I think that's critical because if it's done in South Carson, it's done in Mount Pleasant. It can be done in Clemson. So, this is the one from Mount Pleasant. And they have a really nice, this is two-page thing, but they have a residential tree guide. I don't have that. But when you get to the tree protection, and this is what I think we need to be looking at. For residential properties within the town, trees that are greater than sixteen inches in diameter are protected and require approval for removal. Trees with diameter of twenty-four inches or greater are considered historic and approval from the Board of Housing Appeals must be obtained. The following, and then there's a bunch that like for birch and mimosas and like pop. There are trees that are not protected with this, but the oak trees and those things are. And then there's other information here about if you remove them and measuring them and all of that. So, anyhow, I'd like for, I'd like folks to look at that as well.
I will say one, not that I'm necessarily against that, but you've also got to look at the cost involved in implementing that ordinance. And I mention this because I live in an older neighborhood and I have several large oak trees. So, if I wanted to, I'd say, okay, the one next to my driveway is dying. I don't wait for it to be, I don't want to wait for it to be dead and hit my house.
You have to help the health of the dead of a tree and tell you of it.
Somebody from the city's got to come out and do that and then issue me a permit to cut it down.
No, you should do it.
But then I have to get a permit from the city. That's what I'm saying, is it's an extra cost to the city. It's an extra administrative step that's got to go in. And I'm not just saying that for certain situations, if we want to set a benchmark for certain trees or amount of trees, or if it's the last tree on your property or something like that, that maybe you have to keep at least one or something like that. But if you say any tree over sixteen inches, I can imagine the number of trees in town over sixteen inches that got cut down last year and what it would cost the city to implement that program.
We can, there's several issues that have come up, a lot of them are talked about, kind of following the land regs. And that including what I presented to you all today. And that, as a refresher, I don't think, maybe Brad, you were, you might have been on the planning permission I think when we did the land development regulations like four years ago.
Yeah.
And we had it in there to where we were trying to regulate trees on private property. Or twenty or single-family residential property. And because that was, we recognize that's what the vast majority of our canopy is. And where the greatest good could be done by protecting it. But it did not get traction because it's a pretty invasive thing. You start saying, no, you can't cut down trees. And then it gets into the issue of, so we tell you you can't cut down a tree, but then your tree falls over your house. And so, who's responsible for it? You go, I told you the tree was gonna fall. And, or you have to get permission and there are a lot of trees...
I think there are cities that are making it work and I think we should look at it.
It's interesting. I was just in Austin this past week and they have a tree ordinance for their live oaks. And I did a design there about eight years ago. And it was amazing because I didn't know they had that ordinance. I was talking to somebody. They told me about it. I was, I phoned in town to do my site analysis and inventory. And I'm going, gosh, I've only got like one business day, so I was doing it over the weekend. And I called them that morning, but they had two full-time employees. That's all they did. They, when they came out, they said, they told me what I had to, what I couldn't, couldn't do around the tree. They gave me evaluation of it and the impacts of if I destroyed it and all that kind of stuff. And they spelled it out and they were, it would be, you'd have to hire staff to do it. You could not do it otherwise. Which is not a reason not to do it, but I think it should be, I love the conversation. I mean, I think it's really important. And to that end, what I passed out today is something that's come to light recently. Two, this is where we had trees that were protected through this normal bedding process. And by that, architectural review in particular, where they were trees that were supposed to be saved. And they were getting credit for saving those trees. Well, they didn't protect them and they lost them. And that, what we have right now is you have the ability to... We were charging five hundred dollars a tree for replacement, which was not serving as a deterrent. And then also, that, we wanted to ask, we had some language in here already in our land development regulations, says that any willful action determined to be inconsistent with this standard, which results in the injury of a protected tree, shall constitute a violation of these regulations. But we don't say what the penalty is. And so, now, if a person willfully comes in there, which is what happened on, I'm not gonna name projects, but over the last twelve months, there've been three or four situations where we lost some deep trees where they're totally whatever we needed here during the approval stage. Then they came in there and took actions that the results were, we had to, we had to say, you're gonna have to take that tree out because this is gonna die and become a threat. So, our recommendation is to give some teeth to this tree protection ordinance. To where that, the resulting loss of any protected tree shall be accompanied by a fee paid prior to the issuance of the CIO. That is equivalent to five times the calculation value of the tree using tree plantations, tree value calculator. And there are multiple calculators out there, but this is one that Tony felt was very reliable. Here's an example, like a twenty-four-inch oak tree would be valued at about seven thousand dollars. If you willfully kill one, it'd be thirty-five thousand dollar penalty. You're not gonna willfully kill one. You will if you can pay, you're only gonna pay five hundred dollars fine. Thank you, Paul.
How does a tree get to be a protected tree? I've seen that language in here.
That's what I was saying.
It is a tree, a protected tree is if it is one that's required. If you have to have a tree, if you're getting credit for that tree for part of the canopy or for your, being your, your planting requirements. Or if you, like, have you voluntarily injured your tree to protect it.
That's what I, we had a discussion about this a long time ago, about identifying protected trees. And a homeowner could do that. And a homeowner could, could do that, right?
You can do that voluntarily.
So I have a giant poplar tree in my front yard.
Right.
And you don't want the next owner to.
No, I want that tree to stay.
That's, that's, that was the intent of the program, those that were, but that, that was the stuff.
And then we go with the property, right?
And it was, you present, it was basically, as I remember, give a request, it has to be approved by city council, I think, to bring you into the program voluntarily like that. Although, most of the other protection, we were talking tonight about the canopy coverage requirement and subdivision. Any, they're gonna show you on the landscape plan at the preliminary plat review. They'll have, they call out all of the trees they're protecting and the ones they're replacing. And they have, when the building has one of the good bulldozers, those are all considered protected trees because they were presented as a piece of this development.
Okay.
So they are bound through, you know, to, uh, through the ordinance to maintain them.
If you're something like this, I'm a key of weeds, uh, one of our coworkers, um, just saying, he remembered, he didn't have a clearance of land up here. And, uh, and the guy's, uh, told him, said, whatever you do, don't touch this tree. He's like a forty thousand dollar tree, this is years ago. And, uh, they had a similar thing where they had a, 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 a valuation of it. Um, we didn't, we felt it was smarter to attach ourselves to an existing system that creates valuation, but come off the multiplier and, uh, to where it should be a penalty. Uh, you know, if it's a trash tree, it's a old tree, one will probably not even allow you to, maybe to protect the tree. But you take some of these, like, it's, it's like what, uh, what the tumor quarters down in Auburn, where all those, that people poison those trees and you think about some of the iconic, uh, I mean, we're trying to protect these trees and, and if we're, if you're agreeing that you're gonna, we're giving you concessions from you saying you're gonna protect them, we just wanna make sure that you're, you're, you're really gonna protect them.
And that doesn't ever lie, the city's tree, that, that's the whole point of your protection. Is your old healthy tree.
No, I'm, I'm aware of that, but if I, my point with that was, say there's one next to my, and I call XYZ Tree Service to come cut it out. Before they can cut it down, I have to get a permit. So somebody from the city has to issue that permit. They have to say.
That is a protected tree.
It is a protected, yeah.
Yeah, under the current, what you're proposing is any tree, any tree that's in certain, like, any oak tree over sixteen or twenty-four inches is automatically protected. So that one that's kinda dying next to my driveway, I have to then show cause to the city why it should come down. It's gonna take time from a city employee to go over that cause with me and somebody may have to come out to the site to verify what I'm saying. And that, that was my only point, is that, that's what increases the cost of that program. Because my mom used to live in Surside and you couldn't, in Surside, South Carolina, you can't even cut limbs off a tree that are bigger than six inches without getting a permit and free approval. And they do that because there's, they have limited canopy down there. And she hired a guy that didn't get free approval. And he got, he got about seven thousand dollars worth of fines for doing it for not getting free approval.
And it's, I, I, I think this is a real interesting session to have. This, this intermediate step, all it does is say, these are people who've already agreed to say this is a protected tree. We just wanted to put some real value as to what happens if you don't protect your tree. Because you, you said, oh, I'm gonna take care of it, I'm gonna do all the stuff. And this is only if a person willfully does it. We just show that there was, this wasn't like, uh, an honest mistake kind of thing. Uh, and we had several that were not, they were pretty obvious that they, that there was.
So Todd, any new development with the tree plan, all of those trees would be considered protected trees?
Yeah, yeah, the ones that are requiring plantings or ones that they protected in exchange for not having to plant other trees.
Okay.
Because we give credit for, if you've got a big oak out there, we'd, we'd rather have that big oak truly protected than planting three more little ones. Uh, you know, in some cases, we actually come up better planting the three little ones over time. But, um, but we do, we're losing a lot of our canopy. It was, uh, Steve Pan, it was, you know, twelve years ago. It was, the people in my neighborhood, man, I mean, it's just like, it made me sick. I had to rewrap the way I came home for a week. Soon as I took out four of these oak trees that were like four feet nine, I think, I, I think.
Were red saparina in the room?
It's just, oh, I know, I know.
Is there a, uh, ordinance for dead trees? Like, you know.
Nope.
Do you think we should add that into, because there's, I, I, I can give you three examples where a homeowner has one or more dead trees.
Yeah.
And they're refusing to cut it down and it's endangering the neighbor's property too, so.
Here's where it gets sticky, Brad, on that.
Civil, civil issues.
Yeah.
Or perhaps the.
I mean, I, I mean, I get it, but it's, it, it, it's, it's a, it's a fine line and it's a, it's a tough one because you need to be very fair, you need to be very responsive. Um, if a person got a dead tree and they go, well, I can't afford some, some tree where, I mean, I've got, I probably have six trees on property that are al, almost four feet in diameter. And if I had to take one, and one of them is gonna die in the next five years. And I've already been thinking, I just, how are we gonna, how are we gonna get it down and, and where, you know, if, if it's gonna be a challenge.
Well, I just spent five thousand dollars to have a big tree taken down.
But you're in a position to do that.
And limbs adjusted so it would take some weight off of one side.
Right, and I have to, I'll do what I can to save this, but, but, you know, but, you know, we're fortunate enough to be in a position to do that. So you got family that's got a tree that doesn't die and it's gotta come down, well.
They need six years.
The city needs to, to.
Yeah.
Be safe.
Well, you know, City of Greenville has that, where they have, you know, they're, it's parfraged protection, like, for dead trees where you've got a year to take it down or you get a warning, second letters, uh, I don't know if they go to court, or you get a visit from a cut officer and, and a third letter or warning, whatever, you come to court and you're gonna be faced with a fine. City of Greenville does have a, or just of that type, I'm not sure how it's, how it's worded, but, I just, you know, I mean, I, I knew fewer too. In parts and, and, and I, there's in one, one time we were doing, we're on the street and the lady says, hey, this person over here's got a dead.
It's been six years.
You know, and you, you know, talk to them. They're getting nowhere, whether they're also surrounded with a bank, it's probably out there and stuff, you know, and one of the tops fell out two years ago. And it's on their property. This person didn't even do anything to remove it, it's on his property instead. So they had to come pay us to remove it, you know. A deal, but anyways, it's just, there's no protection against that. Identify somebody, address them.
Well, just look through these, get the frozen files and you figure out.
Yeah.
I mean, my opinion would be is that if a homeowner, for one, if I own the house and I own the lot and I, I bought it, I should be able to remove a tree if I wanna remove a tree that's on my lot, um, irregardless. Um, if it wasn't already inclu, included and disclosed when I purchased that home, um, whether it's protected in here or not. As much as I love trees, but you still, you, you're, I know, to me, it seems like it's a fine line. And I don't wanna keep us here discussing it. Um, and also the people being able to afford to remove a tree that needs to be, um, you know, that's another issue. If you have a healthy tree, the city says, no, you can't, and then we have a storm that moves through and knocks that tree over, well, now who's responsible for it? That person could come back and say, well, the ci, I wanted to remove it, the city wouldn't allow it, I have documentation.
That's an act of God. I don't think we can go there with, with dictating.
Yeah, I know, but, yeah, but it, there may be law for it. But to me, it just seems like if you're not in a, in an HOA, uh, type community, you know, you have your, your, your lot, your land you paid for. You know, if you wanna remove it, you should be able to remove it. As much as I may not agree with that, person, homeowner should be able to do that.
And that was the main sentiment when we discussed this four years ago, council, and they were, there was a lot of absurd about protecting our canopy, but there was, uh, the specific point was, it didn't cross the lines what they felt was fairly invasive, um, in prison or property law.
Okay, let's wind, let's wind up.
Well, this, I mean, I put this to only agenda for action to make some.
Yes. And, and if there's anything, any building that's, that, staff report.
This, actually, this was under a staff report, that we talked about, but that, um, and the, the other thing, um, campus, do you look? The latest with the banner, I know it's there in the, just kind of update.
Yeah, it's down. And then, uh, and, um, um, it's, so I'm not sure where, what else needs to happen.
I mean, that's, they come to the B, to the V A R, I think, hanging and the colors.
Yeah, all that, and that's where, I think, to the, to your point about how do we keep that happening.
The time, the time.
Yeah, and, uh, we, 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 I know we talked to Jake about it, about some different ideas of how to word it. And we have not, I'll be honest with you, have not come up with what we feel like is an effective solution yet, not saying we can. Where we don't wanna make people change, uh, uh, the only thing we allow to stay, uh, are like health wanted and for, for lease signs. And if you've got, like, out in public, they've got that vacant parcel out there and they got IHOP. They've, they've always had a built space that was empty and always had a vacant lot since the day they opened. So they had a legitimate need to put up a sign and let people know out there. And generally kept their sign in good repair. With, the hard part is, is saying, well, what happens if it falls into disrepair? What, you know, how, and it's like some of the things you can say, well, I know it when I see it, and that's probably true. But we don't wanna automatically say, well, every year you gotta move it. It just means I gotta take up the whole sign, just gonna move it a foot because that's the word it says. And maybe that's, that's the best solution because it forces you to think of it, and certainly would be the mechanism if it has painted it. Cause there've been some, there've been some properties, police signs that have fallen during disrepair.
So is that con, is that considered a temporary sign or a banner?
It's called a, uh, it's a, yeah, it's a temporary, uh, well, how's, anyway, because, uh, that, those are, the real estate signs are not banners. They can be banners. Banners cannot, that should not have stayed up as long as it did.
So what we need to do to the ordinance to fix that?
That one should never have been allowed to stay up there that long. And so enforcing it would have been, like, they can do that one. And, uh, and I think that it was, I mean, honestly, I, I didn't even notice up there when you pointed it out. And then when we did it, uh, and I think Jake said this too, we thought it was actual sign. I mean, they actually, it was a permanent sign up there, ordinance was allowed that. But that, because it's been bounded the way it was and, uh, uh, that it, um, so the banner part I think we can fix, but the, uh, it, I think the ordinance is, is intact. But these, the, the, the duration of health wanted or real estate signs is a little trickier. And that, and the best we've come up with is saying you have to replace them every year at the discretion of the zoning administrator. And that way, if it's, if the sign's still in good shape, we're not gonna make you just move it a foot. But it gives us that mechanism every year to say, okay, it's time for you to do something with this.
Three, every three hundred and sixty-four days?
Yeah, yeah, something like that.
That's how long, three hundred and sixty-four days? Do you either have to have it approved to continue or replace it or take it down?
We don't have that many, you know, major signs up and that, that, uh, that we can, but anyways, we'll, we can take a look at that. We're also, I was at a conference last week. Went to one about, uh, a session about signage, sign ordinances, because there's a whole lot of stuff happening nationally about sign ordinances. And, um, uh, and Mary's been working with us, someone hires us. And so we're, we're looking to do a kind of relitigate some of the sign ordinances. But I think that was the, the staff report.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, any questions from the commission? I'm following House President. And Jackie, any questions from you or comments?
No ma'am, I just, well, I did have one about the tree. Um, because, uh, you have pockets of areas that have, uh, trees that, I don't know, they were built, the areas were built in the eighties and the trees are right up against the house. And these are like thirty, forty foot around trees, but up against the house. And so there's gotta be language in, in there that would accommodate for that. That's all I have to say about that. Don't wanna go back in and re-litigate the whole issue. Just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Um, so that's it.
All right, uh, so we'll, we'll, we will have opportunity to, to continue the discussion. So do we need, uh, planning commission representation at the upcoming council meeting?
I don't think we have any, any issues that, you know, I, I, I'm not aware of anything on the agenda relates to planning commission.
Okay. Um. And I saw where the workshop on the development strategies has been changed to be a budget workshop. I don't know what happened with the, um, and this is a question I asked John because John's former. Because in the description, it talked about, uh, when they come back, they were gonna, gonna come back with a three-D rendition so we could see. Well, what they sent for the title was a two-D and maybe that's the issue that's why they got pulled.
There was some changes, and I'll be honest, I have not, uh, I, I.
But it's just weird because of the changes at meetings.
I spoke to him today and, uh, so I, I don't know, uh, I got the notification, I was supposed to be on that. Uh, we were supposed to have a call today about with development strategies and it got canceled as well. Uh, because the meeting on Wednesday got changed.
Changed, definitely.
I think what happened, I mean, is that, uh, that they, I think there was a, a budget centric issue came up and they already had everybody together and available and they said, we need to address this budget issue 'cause this gotta get all voted on and then two readings by the end of June to be legally compliant. And so I think there might have been a little bit of wiggle room with the development strategy piece and they, but I'm, I'm, I'm guessing. That's the only thing I would think of, is making more changes like that, that quickly. But yeah, the two-D thing, I think that, my guess that was a typo. Uh, uh, 'cause I know that they're doing three-D drawings.
Right, right, okay.
So has that been rescheduled?
Well, I don't know, that, that, it just got, that meeting description got changed from that one to budget. John, I asked John former about, he, he thought it was, that they were having two meetings. He hasn't seen this, this change any, any down right now. Um, free future workshops, we've got that covered 'cause people are scheduled for it. So is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm moving.
I second.
All right, thank you. Thank you Jackie, all right.
Good night.